Good morning.
I am. Hi. I'm an I for California. We're live.
That's a separate. Called me in the office. We give, we give a presentation. Is that the public hearing? Called the order.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we, this is a hearing on the proposed, uh, local income tax modification that the council is proposing. Uh, this was duly published.
David, you're gonna have to speak up when he can't hear you.
This was duly published in Perry County News, uh, as of the fifteenth of July. We also are, as of 2024, you're required to notify any affected taxing units. So the city of Tell City, the city of Hamilton, and the town of Troy were also emailed of this, uh, public hearing and, uh, copy that was presented in the newspaper. And, uh, uh, we are proposing modifying the local income tax rate. Uh, the, uh, we were taking certified shares, uh, would be remain the same at five point, uh, five to eight percent. Public safety would be going from existing is point three two two zero, and that would increase to point three five two zero. And economic development, um, would be going from point five five to point three two. Uh, public tax relief there, we hadn't, we don't have that anymore, so there's nothing there. Special purpose rate, we no longer have, so there's nothing there. Then correctional rehabilitation facilities would be going from zero to zero point one. And emergency medical services would be going from zero to zero point one. Uh, so the total tax rate would not be changing. It would be remaining at the current one point four. And then a, a portion of the public safety rev- uh, revenue will be directed to the public safety answering point PSAP. Uh, so the existing public safety rate of point three two two oh will now become point three five two oh, with the, uh, PSAP changing from point oh seven two oh to point one zero two, cause it's dedicated, dedicated to PSAP. And at this hearing, this is a time for, uh, anybody wanting to, uh, express their concerns or comments, uh, we would ask that you use decorum and, and only one can speak at a time, so. I'd like to.
David, I don't think people can hear you very well in the back at all.
Well, I don't know what to do about that.
He's asking if anybody wants to speak.
You want public comments?
Public comments.
There's a sign up.
This is for those in the, that signed the law to speak or on the hearing.
Right, this is on the hearing.
As long as, if everyone knows that there is a sign up sheet, if you'd like to sign up to speak, there is one up here. A lot of people have signed up already, but if you haven't signed up, you're welcome to. So if not, we'll just go ahead with the list. But that's okay, right?
Do we have a list?
Well, I think there is.
I'm sorry, but I was told earlier, you don't have to sign up if you want to speak at public hearing. I was told you have to sign up if you want to speak at the council. But I was told you did not have to sign up if you want to speak at public hearing.
Would you like to speak? We can add your name to the list if you want.
Oh, I, I wanna know if what I was told was correct.
I think it was. You know, you don't have to sign up to speak, so.
Thank you.
We can give it this list, or unless you want to start, Larry.
Thank you.
Uh, Jody French?
Good evening. I'll try to speak. I have a teacher voice, so I'll try to mimic really loud, okay? Uh, good evening. My name is Jody French, and I'm here on behalf of Perry Central Community Schools to express our concerns with the proposed local income tax rate change. This change is being packaged to the citizens of Perry County as a creative way to reallocate resources to pu- to fund public safety, because public safety has not been funded adequate, adequately in the past. No one is arguing that public safety has to be funded. It should have been funded before, and you're trying to fix that, and we understand that. But your argument is that other counties have a much lower percentage of a local income tax by funding for economic development in their communities. So you are suggesting the simple solution, solution to just cut the county's funding for economic development is two. However, we know that Perry County's financial situation is very different than other counties in the state of Indiana, because over two thirds of our county is owned by the federal government through the Hoosier National Forest. While we are lucky to have the forest, it limits, very much limits the taxable properties and lessens our assessed value. This highly impacts the actual dollar amount behind the rates that have been different and behind those rates. And this is much different story than any other county in the state, and our tax rates have been different to overcome this challenge. Comparing ourselves to other counties is actually comparing apples to oranges. You are suggesting that this change has to be done for public safety. Everyone knows why ambulance services and the nine one one system are essential. Those have to be funded. Economic development is harder to explain, and I wanted to share why our belief is that economic development is essential to our community and how it affects our school corporation. School corporate, our school funding relies on two main pots of money. The first funding stream comes from the Indiana sales tax that is allocated based on the number of students we have enrolled in our school system. The second is from property taxes. Perry County has made great gains in bringing back our homegrown talent and keeping graduates and their families here to work at high wage, high demand jobs over the past few years. With that continued growth of local businesses, an addition of new businesses, and an increase in affordable housing, our students and families will not be able to stay in our community. Before, we had dedicated economic, um, development entity, so before the PCDC, Perry County was declining in population and career opportunities. History has shown that economic develop- development is imperative to ensure that we maintain growth, which greatly impacts funding for our schools. While other rural counties have lost population over the past decades, Perry County has remained steady, and we continue to add job opportunities through advanced manufacturing, construction trades, and entrepreneurship. People are looking for communities where they can live and work remotely and safe communities with good schools. The PCDC's work positions Perry County to attract those potential residents, to grow our assessed value and our population. It does not happen by itself. It takes dedicated talented people to advance this critical work. In addition to the traditional work done by economic development, like attracting and retaining employers, the Perry County Economic Development Corporation has worked alongside all of our public school systems to create workforce education programs that are essential to talent development and attainment for our community. Local businesses and our schools count on our partnership with the PCDC to ensure we have career awareness events, job fairs, internships, apprenticeships, et cetera, that are aligned to the needs of our local workforce. Not only do we see the benefit of these partnerships, but the state of Indiana does as well, as evident by the most recent proposed changes to the high school diploma, which prioritize high quality work-based learning. This requires these partnerships with workforce and education, and PCDC is going to be a critical partner in that work. The Indiana Department of Education, State Chamber, Governor's Workforce Cabinet, and legislative bodies are all behind school systems, businesses, and economic development partnerships, because they see the importance of it for economic growth and prosperity for Hoosiers. The same thing that we want for our people here in Perry County. Perry County Learning Partnership and the Perry County College Success Coalition were both organized under the PCDC and brought together education and workforce to solve talent deficits and also ensure members of the community had a chance to attain training for careers that would provide them with a high quality of life. Perry County has always been known for its innovation and success, and especially in this area, and other communities continue to visit and learn about our programming and take it back to their own communities. Our students are the future of Perry County, and there are some really talented individuals in all of our county schools that would love to have a job closer to home. Cutting economic development funds in our county would be detrimental to these efforts, and while it is easy to compare our local income tax rates, it is not an accurate representation of how it will affect these services and our students, their families, and our local business community. If your bottom line is tax, is your, if your bottom line is, um, keeping the tax rates low, then the only way to do that is provide services and amenities to people in our community for what they need and want, so that we can increase our assessed value. Economic development is critical to ongrowing increases in assessed value. So we are asking you not to pass these tax rate changes. Go back to the drawing board, keep looking for solutions that don't have a dr- such a drastic impact on the future of Perry County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, next to this is David Goffinett.
My name is David Goffinett, and I'm the Chair of Perry County Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here on their behalf. I stand before this group to ask you to pause and table this motion, so the right conversations can be had with the right groups of people. You're proposing a very significant change, and you may have very compelling reasons, but you have not engaged the appropriate entities in a conversation as to why, and more importantly, how might we be able to work together to come to a unified path forward? Clearly, this decision will significantly impact the city of Tell City. Yet you have not met with the mayor and the city council to discuss the potential implications to how they are managing the city and delivering needed projects. Similarly, you have not met with representatives from Candleton and Troy either. You did not meet with me or the executive director of the PCDC, and at no point have you even entertained this as a conversation at a quarterly board meeting, even though Kelly, you're a representative of this body, and Randy Cole is a representative of the county commissioners on our Board of Directors. From the proposed reallocation of dollars, it is clear you're concerned about funding of dispatch services, emergency services, and the jail. To that end, why would you not convene a discussion with representatives of the city of Tell City and Candleton, the town of Troy, the county, and PCDC to better understand the extent of the problem to seek a joint solution? For that matter, why not bring representation of dispatch, EMS, and the sheriff's department to the room as well? I believe we all generally understand the importance of each of these areas and the overall why choose Perry County story. Just as we understand the importance of investing in growth and development, workforce education and alignment, business industry retention and attraction, um, qual- and quality of life improvements are important as well. Why wouldn't we convene a broader conversation to see if there is a way we can work together to find a solution that is workable for all? So again, I ask this group to table this motion, so we can convene that conversation with the right people in the room to better understand the challenges that clearly you face and to seek a unified path forward. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, next we have Chris Kale, Mayor Brett Kale.
Hi, for those of you watching live that do not know me, as he said, my name is Chris Kale, I'm Mayor of Tell City. Um, I've got some questions that can I ask you off questions? Is that okay? Okay. So has any of the county council members or any other county elected officials received the proposed changes with actual dollar figure numbers?
Yes.
I'd say yes.
You all have received that?
We got it at the last meeting. It was emailed and it was handed out, yes.
With like dollar figures handed out?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Let's see. So the legal notice that was sent to me, I obviously didn't have that, but who drafted the proposal and who prepared the numbers? Who drafted that? Who said ten percent or this number or whatever is, who came up with that figure? And who prepared this legal notice form of these numbers on, that I received?
That was prepared by myself and also, uh, Dane, uh, Dana Fitzpatrick, Darren Bates.
Who's he with?
Dana Fitzpatrick.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah.
On July fourteenth, uh, I received an email notice from Council President David Aitchin, and it's dated July the ninth, um, and the notice, when the notice was sent out, it was dated July the ninth on the second page, but it was the fourteenth, and when I received that, what was the reason for the delay in the notice that was sent to me and probably the other ones emailing?
I.
I mean, it's five days later, whenever you send it to, you clearly had already sent it to the newspaper before I got a copy.
The, the only, uh, explanation I would have on that is I received the, uh, approval from the state of Indiana on July the eighth.
Okay.
Of my notice.
Great. But I didn't get it till the fourteenth, and I was just, the reason I'm bringing that up is if it had given me some more time, had I got it a little bit sooner, like, you know, the newspaper did, I could have researched it more and had more time to ask questions and be more prepared, but.
We're only required to provide it ten days prior, too.
Well, I understand, but I was just, I was just concerned, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just asking some questions. That's all, and I don't want anybody to get upset or let emotions get, you know, in the way of things. So our clerk, treasurer, Connie Berger, um, back here, she emailed you on the sixteenth, um, requesting that to meet with you and I, to meet and kind of discuss these. Uh, your response is you weren't available on Thursday and Friday at town commitments, and that's totally understandable. Um, but further, if you were to meet, I would also include one or two other counselors as an spirit of transparency, and, and I can appreciate that. But, uh, but I would like for you to present your concerns at the council on July twenty fifth today. And you're going to say it's nothing against you, it's just that the past people have got upset about meetings that, uh, did not happen in the public eye, and by doing so, all counselors have the same information at the same time. But why, my question is, why, why would you not be willing to sit down one on one as me as a taxpayer and as mayor to kind of discuss these changes in time?
Well, it's been my experience that I, we've done that before, and there's information that comes out of those meetings that's not what occurred at the meeting. That's why we've always, when you meet, we take another person with us.
Okay.
To back us up.
Good answer. I'm just, all right, so it appears that public safety rate will increase, um, from point three two to point three five, about a hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, and I think that will be transferred kind of to the PSAP. Is that right?
Yes.
Good. And correctional rehabilitation facilities and emergency, emergency medical services, uh, will be set at point one oh for both of them, for a total of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars each. For a total of all three of them, one point one million, um, and some change here roughly, uh, will be reallocated from edit funds that was, uh, distributed from Perry County to Tell City and Candleton and Troy. Is, is that about right? Taking all three of those funds to be a little over one point one million will be removed from edit. I'm making sure my information's correct.
Well, it includes the county's portion, all.
Yes, that's included in that, sorry.
Our six, our six hundred and forty-four thousand.
Correct, and that's the next one, so thank you on that one. Uh, so the county council obviously received about fifteen, one point five million in, in edit funds, and now they're gonna go, um, down to about eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand or four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, well, I don't know if loss is the word to use, is that right? That you won't, that you will only receive as part of edit.
We're gonna go down six hundred and forty-four thousand to eight hundred and ninety-seven three twenty-four, correct?
Okay. And obviously Tell City, we receive eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Correct.
Uh, we are gonna go down to five hundred and fifteen thousand, or a loss of three hundred and seventy-one. Candleton's funding, uh, Smokey is here somewhere in the back. His will go from a hundred and ninety-eight thousand down to a hundred and fifteen thousand, or a loss of eighty-three thousand.
Correct.
Troy's funding is ten thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, they're gonna go down to five thousand nine hundred and three, a loss of forty-two hundred, and I don't know if. Troy's here somewhere, oh, I, Troy, all right. What I'm getting at is, is there, I filed my three year edit plan and, and have, and mayors before me have always filed their three year edit plan. In that edit plan, we set aside a reserve that we've used recently, two years ago, to purchase a fire truck, which is a huge public safety thing, I don't make anybody disagree with that. And that fire truck not only serves Tell City, but it could serve the whole county if there could be a fire, just like we had one in Troy a couple of days ago. Family lost their home, Tell City lives down their system. So it, it's not just a Tell City thing, it is a county thing. Um, also including that plan is floodwater and stormwater improvements. I don't think it's a secret that if we don't keep our floodwater up and maintain it, problems could occur, right? Which have effect on our electricity, but have effect on our wastewater, which Tell City is almost, you could say, the wastewater treatment for the entire county. Also, we also do a paving project, so you see all this paving going around Tell City? We use that at dollars, um, for some of that, as well as other funds. Uh, the sports complex, we've set aside funds right in there, the Tell City Economic Development, and also the two matching NDOT projects we have going on right now. I hope you all are aware, but the rear footing sidewalks on Highway sixty-six on the east side of the street from Washington all the way to Williamsburg Boulevard. You see people walking out on the highway all the time, you know, baby strollers, wheelchairs, this will get them off there, so it's a public safety thing. And also a streetscape project on Tell Street. We, what I'm getting at is, we use those edit dollars to go for grants. So we take that, you know, twenty dollars and turn it to a hundred dollars or whatever. We, we're using them as an economic development tool and getting more money with that money. I- if this is passed, the one thing, we're gonna have to look at cutting my edit plan basically forty-two percent. And my concern is, we have two commitment letters with NDOT using edit funds that Connie sent in on, in twenty twenty and another one in twenty twenty-two, saying those funds are available. So if those funds are cut, and we have to make other cuts to make up for it, where are we, where are we gonna do? Do we refund NDOT and pay for all the engineering work and don't do the sidewalks? That, that could happen. Do we forego the sports complex, because we don't have the financials to do it now, because the money's been shifted a different way? Uh, those are some concerns that I have, uh, I think Tell City as, as mayor and probably our clerk, treasurer, and our council, we will look at our budget. We will cut services or cut things we may have to cut to make up for those things, so that doesn't happen. I, I will say that. Um, but you know, i- it's important that we have this open communication, and I am not against this EMS service. It is critically needed for this, I mean, anybody in this room would disagree. I, I, I don't know a whole lot about, um, the correction facility or the rehabilitation facility that's proposed, and I do know quite a bit about PSAP. I worked on that for well over a year, a year and a half, uh, and so I'm pretty familiar with that. But these funds, I just, the communication is what I wish would have occurred, and I'm all for this transparency, but a phone call, say, hey, mayor, we're looking at making these changes, the county's really concerned about this EMS service, um, you know, can we sit down and see what impact they may have on you? Let's talk about the numbers, let's, this working together is my concern, that I don't feel took place in. And that's just my concern, and Kelly, you're, you're next door, I mean, this was going on, you could have just hollered in the fence, say, hey, Chris, we're looking at doing this, you have time to talk about it, I wanna show this to you. It, it would really been nice.
Did you, did you reach out to me?
I did not, I reached out to Council President.
So I just wanna make that clear.
And, and that's fair.
If you had questions, you could have reached out to me, I'll tell them.
Sure, and, and that's fair. I'll, I'll owe that, I apologize, I should have. But again, and that's kind of back and forth in the communication, trying to get at, and, and I just hope that's something that city and county government can work on in the future when things are, because they get an email like this, I'm not gonna lie, I remember Scott, I was, I was pretty upset. Took time to calm down, it took time to research it, and there are a number of mayors throughout Indiana that I consulted about this, and they too have had the same issue, and there, there is a lot of concern. And what I'm getting at, I just, we need to work together on this. Uh, again, I'm not against this EMS, I don't want anybody to twist my words and say that I'm against it. I'm asking for communication, working together, sitting down with PCDC and see what kind of effect it would have on their budget. Sitting down to work with Candleton, who can't even afford to be part of PCDC because they need that money so much. That's, I mean, I don't think Candleton, but Smokey may probably, but eighty-eight thousand or eighty-three thousand, I'm sorry, from Candleton's budget could really hurt them. And I'm, I'm just concerned for a lot of us, I think you are too, uh, but you know, EMS and all that, I, I think it's, again, it's a sit down, um, I, I hope you guys take the time to do that. Last question, have anybody pulled any numbers that, is this four hundred and seventy-nine thousand for here, four seventy-nine for there? Is there any numbers to back that up that you need that amount, or is that not enough? Or is it too much, or is it just kind of a guess?
It, it, we probably would need more.
Yeah, we're still gonna have to spend more.
But have there been any numbers created to even come up with that number yet? Like projected, you know, research costs, expenses that has occurred?
We have.
We know what it costs. We know what we're budgeting now for those services.
Okay, is that maybe at the meeting before, or is that a, another meeting, so I missed that part, sorry. Well, that's, is he having questions for me? I'm sorry, and again, I'm not coming at you guys, I'm just trying to ask questions. And I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to do that, never mind, so.
I'll be glad. Thanks.
I apologize. Um, we are actually here for a different purpose, to talk about our transitional housing and the county's, uh, several hundred thousand opioid monies that we would like to obtain, uh, find out how to access, so.
I think that's the next meeting, if that's okay.
That'd be the next meeting.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
So.
We can get you on the public comments then.
Okay.
Public comments and talk then. She can, yeah, it's fine.
Next we have. Crystal Mosca's.
I, I'm with this, with Jen.
She, yeah, we're together, I'm sorry, man.
Oh, Gary Gravel. My name's Gary Gravel, the Human Resources Manager at Opa-ocka Boundary. Uh, going off what the mayor said and Ms. French said, uh, economic development is what drives this county. Uh, with that as the base, it sets the precedent for the future. Don't have the exact numbers as Mayor Kale had, but I'm seeing six figures set down there that's gonna come out of economic development. Uh, we, as one of the largest employers in the area, need this community to be vibrant. You do that by having other businesses, not just key corner points, key cornerstones. We need little businesses, we need big businesses, we need training. All these things come through these funds. Public safety, by all means, safety is important. Just the percentage shift in the amount just seems draconian right out of the gate. It seems like it, we could ease into it a little bit more, have further discussion, as the mayor said. Ms. French said, uh, we are unique. We get reached and recognized locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally on what we do in this county with our economic development. And it seems the county government, this body and the commissioners well over the last several years have made it a point to take away from economic development availability and its funding. And that's troubling as a very large employer who still needs employees. We prefer employees locally. Employees can work for us, the spouse works for another business in the area, the kids go to school, and we can tend to build it. It just seems like it's a very large chunk all at one time. And without, as the mayor referenced, a chart breaking things down, what are you thinking? Where do you wanna go? I think that would help answer a lot of questions, and I think it would help drive additional conversations to possible other solutions. So that is where I'm at. Thank you.
Next we have Cody Dawson, or Cody Rhodes, I guess.
Axton.
What is it?
The Axton.
Axton, okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna back up what Gary said and really like Jody and David, too. I mean, we have to continue to grow as a community. We've struggled to do that, we really kind of held our own though compared to other places. And if we cut economic development, everyone's gonna start to see a big backslide. I mean, we have about eleven hundred employees, we are the main supplier for HTC and Web. You add all three of us together, that is a huge part of this community. You need everything behind that to support it, you need the schools, you need the parks, you need amenities, you need continued growth, otherwise it's gonna start to decline, or you can't build houses. You have all these other things going on, and then you guys aren't gonna get the tax money that you did well if you start that backwards slide. Cutting economic development, all that does is start the slide, so we really need to consider this. Now, I know there's maybe some discontentment between all of the groups here, but this is a small enough town that everyone should be able to work together. I mean, everyone in here, we guys, we see each other at meetings and ballgames and all these other things. It's silly to kind of come to the point where everyone's confrontational and we have this sort of issue. This should all be handled as a group team effort, so that we can accommodate everyone in here. No one wants to cut anything safety-wise, or ambulances, or not support Allen, or anything like that, but we can support everybody, but we need to say that we're gonna support everybody and not just cut one area, and that one area does start the backwards slide. So again, I'm just here to support Jody, Gary, David, everyone else's vote, Chris. That's really where we gotta go with this and work together as a team. That's all I got.
Megan Fritschley? She here?
Hi, my name's Megan Fritschley. Um, we just moved back to Tell City, and we have a farm out in Perry County and a house in Tell City. Hi, my name's Megan Fritschley. We just moved back to Tell City and we have a farm out in Perry County and a house in Tell City. First, I would like to know, do we have a list of citizens who have been communicated to to see if they want this? In your areas, in your districts where you were elected, have you reached out to see what your citizens that you represent want?
No, we have public meetings where they're all out there so that the public is aware and we make them aware in these meetings of what's going on.
So you haven't?
We have. Yes, absolutely. We have.
I am going to publicly request, which I already have, any record of any emails sent for this economic development. And I have consulted an attorney. Even private emails are public record if you are discussing this. And I know private emails have been used. So I will be requesting that tomorrow. And just pretend I have them. Also, do all council members have all the information that is about to be discussed? Do you feel like everyone is up to speed on what is happening tonight?
I have, I did my own research on a lot of things, so I can't speak for everybody.
Do you feel like you do?
I wasn't involved.
Do you feel like you do?
Yeah, I believe I do.
From the meeting with David?
I would like to know, I would like to know where is the money going to come from if we don't do this? That's my main concern.
Paul, do you feel like you know?
No, I'm not totally informed.
Erla, do you?
About 80%.
Gail? David?
Everybody was emailed the same thing.
How many days ago?
It was the last, our last meeting in June.
So this was proposed in June? When was this proposed and sent to your council?
It's been proposed several months ago.
It was emailed out at 2:07 prior to the June meeting. It was added to the agenda as discussion at the June meeting. Then on July 15th or July 10th, David Achen contacted me about advertising it. I was then sent an email that chain that I said, he said, you were copied on the emails. I said, I was copied on a chain email that Robert Norris sent me, but I can't see all the attachments below. I said, I went down and read all of it and on that email is David Achen, Kelly Harding and Randy Cole. So all this discussion has been done with this gentleman at the DLGF between these three. And then he told me to advertise this when it needed to be advertised, to be discussed at the July 25th meeting. I then advertised, told him it needed to be submitted to the newspaper by noon tomorrow to be in the paper on July 15th, which it was in the paper on July 15th, and thus this is where we're at here. So there's the backstory of where all this has come from and where it's been.
Yeah, and in the June meeting, we did bring it up that we were going to research this and ask if it was okay from this board. If we researched it, David and I were going to do that and we have done that.
This is loaded on everything.
That's that didn't.
Here's the whole, I wasn't going to talk, but of course I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know I do. There are seven people on a council, seven people. Now, I'm not saying this is a bad idea, good idea, whatever. That's beyond the point. The whole thing is this should be a collaboration, just like Chris said. But what's happening is a small group of people is working things together, then they're pushing it in at the meeting. And then we're, we're here. Where everybody, yes, it is. That is exactly what happened.
You're incorrect.
So here.
No.
Can I keep going?
So that's what's.
I was called a liar on Facebook and I just had all three commissioners verify Kelly that everything I said was correct.
Yeah, everything in the newspaper that was reported is incorrect.
It's my turn.
That's wrong.
So I want to know if every council member thinks that they have adequate information to make this vote tonight? And if so, I'd like to point out that we have 83 people. That's approximately 2,000 people if you include families and friends, right? Right? Okay. So if you have 2,000 people, let's say that are affected, right, stringwise, right? 25 people from a family. I know. How many people do you have in your family, David?
Who are affected by people harming you and your lifestyle and your drought? Who's harming some? So wait a minute. I need to know what you're talking about. We're harming people. Okay, I'll tell you what's harming people is not having adequate EMS service and not not properly funding that so that we.
Can I finish? Please. Yeah. So you have a lot of citizens. Okay, that's a rough estimate. It's probably more. That are done and nobody cares? You're going to push this through because of six people? Six? I mean, guys, I'm telling you, this is, this is out of hand. There are investigations. There are audits. Your solid waste just shut down. And you're taking money from the cities without even telling the mayors beforehand.
We did.
They were told. We required.
They got, they got public notice.
I got leave notice.
As required. That's absolutely.
I got an email. Smokey didn't even get the notice.
Yes, he did.
Yes.
Yes, you were.
So and also I would just like to point out that Chris Hill is not a mind reader. If it's your plan, the council should first talk amongst all of them and then reach out to the mayor of the biggest city that you have in the county.
We did discuss this at the last meeting.
Is there a reason I can't?
Megan, this was done in April and May.
You're making disinformation statements. We did talk about.
Chris did not tell me to publish it. I knew it had to be published.
I didn't say you published it. You called me on the 10th and asked me when I had, when I had to get this submitted to be for the July 25th meeting. And I said, it needs to run in the paper on July 15th and I have to have it to the news. Then it has to be submitted to the news by noon tomorrow. That's all I said.
Right.
So I was given the history. Yes, this was emailed out on June.
But the meeting had to be moved out because it wasn't an appropriate amount of time.
No, no.
No.
This was emailed, David emailed it out on, at the June meeting. Was that June 24th? At 2:07 to everybody. It was discussed at the June meeting, but not entirely. It was just, it was. You didn't, there was no discussion on it. You read it. No one had had, I believe you said you hadn't had enough time to review it. And that this would, that no motion was, nothing was being done just for everybody to review it. That's what was said.
I feel like our county is being dismantled piece by piece. Things are being added to where, and you're public to find out.
And the misinformation is a big problem also because there's a lot of it. And it is unfair to the public to tell people that people are not notified, nobody knows about this, it wasn't discussed in meetings. That is all false. All of that is false and it can be proven.
You're right. It can. And and I'll tell you this, again, when I found out public, like regular personal emails are public, that's public record if you discuss business. I'm just letting you know. So verified by an attorney. So I have a question. Does everyone feel like you get adequate information as a council? Please be honest because I am tired of doing this behind closed doors.
If you don't get adequate information.
Kelly, clearly I know you get adequate.
I believe it's your responsibility.
Well, without a doubt, it's not adequate information, just like the prosecutor's office. You know, the addition at the courthouse they started on this morning, the 563,000 or 653,000, whatever the hell it is, you know. We never even had a set of plans here. There never has been a set of plans in a public meeting displayed.
Exactly.
And that's transparency at its best.
Keith, you're on the courthouse security committee. Do you think that's a good idea to put that out and say, hey, everybody, here's what it's going to look like? Come, come check it out.
Absolutely.
It is public record if you want to request it publicly, but I don't think we should project a courthouse layout. We shouldn't have to. He can request it at any time he wants. We should not be taking the entire courthouse. You're on the security committee. You think that's a good idea to take the entire courthouse and to say, hey, here's where all the offices are? Here's where it is.
We don't think that when they built the courthouse back in 1998.
I don't know. I don't, I'm asking you, you're on the security.
Have a drawing.
You're on the.
I was live. I remember.
Hey, Keith, you're on the security committee. You can answer that. If you think that's fine.
The security committee was never even consulted with that bill.
It's its own separate thing.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the hearing.
That's just transparency.
Yeah, just because if you don't have enough information, then it's your responsibility to go find it or get it or call and ask and figure it out. Or you could have called me, you could have emailed me, you know, I have stuff that I research. I mean, I can't do it for you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak concerning this public hearing that we are conducting at this?
I would like to.
Larry?
Larry Tinnman, Tell City. I echo a lot of the previous comments that were made about the importance of economic development. I echo a lot of the previous comments that were made about economic development. It's the driving force behind this community. But I want to approach this a little bit differently. I'm not going to be as nice as Mr. Goff and our mayor. What you folks have proposed is a 42% reduction of economic development income taxes. 42%. $1.1 million. 300 nearly 372,000 dollars was being taken away from Tell City. 372,000, I don't know how many of you folks live in Tell City. I do. I represent District One in Tell City. Kelly, I represent you on the city council. Okay, you're taking away 371,000 dollars. Okay? Part of that money, as the mayor alluded to, is is matching funds, matching state and federal funds for a new sidewalk of Highway 66, which people have wanted for years. I've heard people asking for a sidewalk. We've got 230,000 dollars of edit funds budgeted as matching funds for that sidewalk.
In your reserve?
No, ma'am. In the mayor's three-year plan. Okay? So that project is in danger because if this, if this goes through and we have to cut things by 372,000 dollars, we're going to have to cut a lot of things. We may have to cut the animal shelter. Okay, we have talked about it because we didn't know as a council that this was even going on. Now, your total local income tax rate is above 40, correct? What's the maximum you could raise that to?
Two something?
Two fifty. Two fifty. So if you're needing funds to support EMS, and I don't doubt that you are, or to support PSAP or to support correctional rehabilitation facilities, did you consider raising your local income tax?
Not until we get more efficient with what we have. Oh, wow. That's the truth. My first, my first thing is not, let's just raise taxes. I've heard that a lot in the last year. Just raise taxes. Who cares? Just raise taxes. I care because I care about the citizens and I care about what we're doing and making sure we're efficient with what we have and putting priorities like the ambulance and the EMS service and those type things. So sometimes we have to prioritize things over other things. If sidewalks is more important to you, I understand. But to me, every resident should have adequate ambulance service in this county and they haven't had for many years.
Don't talk to me about EMS services. I've got a whole family that's been involved in any EMS services.
Well, I'm just telling you. Okay.
Don't talk to me about.
Well, I'm just telling you.
And sidewalk is a public safety issue. Right now, you've got people walking along the highway or sometimes even on the highway. And I noticed, and I'm sure this is just a coincidence, but moving the edit funds, 400 and almost 480,000 dollars into correctional rehabilitation facilities, I assume that's to replace, partially replace the 650,000 dollars you're spending on the prosecutor's board.
No, not at all.
Never considered that.
That's going in a different fund?
That's an incorrect assumption. Did you know that the county?
That's going in a different fund?
What is?
That's not going into the 2 million dollar?
No.
You, I tried to explain this at the city meeting and you did not understand it apparently. The 2.5 million dollars for the special legislation fund is a restricted fund. At that time, it was only for the jail. Now it is available for all capital projects. It's not a fund for jail operations or anything like that. We can't use it for that. It has, it's restricted to only certain things. So when you say, you know, we can use the 2.5 million that we have, that's incorrect. We cannot use it for that.
We're spending 350,000 dollars currently.
Out of our edit. Out of our slice of the edit towards the jail. So the edit plan, I want to explain to everybody, we have an edit plan.
So are you no longer going to be spending any edit funds then to support the sheriff?
First of all, we don't make that decision. That's a commissioner decision. But the second, the second thing is why should we take an entire slice of the pie that is split between the county, Tell City, Hamilton and Troy and expect the county's portion to pay for the jail at 350,000 while everyone else has discretionary funds to use what, for whatever they want? This way squares it up where everybody in the county is paying for the emergency services of EMS, the jail and the dispatch service. Everyone is, those taxes are coming in and that's what is being paid for instead of taking just 350,000 of the county's portion of edit funds that we can be using for economic development towards the jail that everybody should be paying for.
I will remind you again, I apologize if this sounds harsh, but I will remind you again, Tell City is part of the county. We pay county taxes.
And it's not adequately enough to fund the services that we have. And that's why we are increasing rates so that we can have adequate funding for those services because none of us want to have an EMS service that is in shambles. We've had it in recent years. It's very scary. It's not fair to the residents. It's not fair to you, Larry. I don't want you to have to call dispatch and we have an adequately funded dispatch, so there's not enough dispatcher, the equipment's outdated and then they can't get you an ambulance because it's on the back of a wrecker. I have a list here of the ambulance, the current fleet that we have from years of neglect. Okay, we have a 2018 with 120,000 miles. We have a 1997 with 131,000 miles. We have a 2012 with 300,000 miles, a 2015 with 296,000 miles and one in the shop. We just bought another one with our county portion of ARP funds. We bought one and you see it on the road. We also just purchased another one with county ARP funds. We didn't ask Tell City for ARP funds. We didn't ask.
Sit down here, Larry. You want to know.
We didn't ask camp county, we didn't ask Hamilton, we didn't ask Tell City for your ARP funds. We also updated life saving equipment.
If I might, I'm sorry, but county ARP funds?
That's correct.
Tell City is part of the county.
Tell City got their own portion of ARP funds.
But Tell City is also part of the county. We work.
Tell City got their portion of ARP funds. I was on the committee, Larry. I understand this.
But Tell City residents were counted in the ARP funds you got. We got counted twice.
Okay.
So it's not Tell City residents, it's really.
Do you know how much we just spent? We spent 200,000 of our tribal funds, all 200,000 to buy another ambulance to try to get this up to speed. We spent 575,000 dollars of county ARP funds to buy another ambulance, life-saving equipment, things that were outdated, cardiac monitors, video laryngoscopes, AEDs to place all throughout the county and to help increase our first responder program.
And this goes away, they are in the Bible. So we're going to sustain this going forward.
That's correct. So this is why the EMS tax, we feel it is necessary to have this so that we can properly fund and plan for the future because who knows if there's going to be another CARES Act or tribal fund or we shouldn't, that's not appropriate to plan that way, just to say, oh, here it is. We can just use this.
You're correct. It's not appropriate to plan that way. But you could have chosen to raise the taxes, the local income tax. You could have made that choice.
Yeah, you're correct. But we have other ways to do things and we have chosen this one. So that's.
Kelly, I appreciate the information.
Decision's already made.
The decision's not made. I'm just saying.
You just told me.
This is the proposal. Larry, you're making assumptions. This is a proposal. I'm one of seven. I think you know that. You're on a board. You understand how it works. I don't vote for everybody else. I'm one vote. I think, you know, your disingenuous joke is not funny.
Kelly, I almost, I appreciate you sharing that stuff with the ambulance and that's the information I was talking about. Had that been shared with city leaders, with David and I, it would have been nice to have that because it would have, not said lessen the blow, but made it more understanding.
You talked about all these things in public meetings, multiple public meetings.
Communication.
Multiple public meetings. I'll, I'll give you the dates and times and the links and you can all watch it.
No, that's fine.
I can't help it if you don't.
Again, my, my point is it'd be nice. I don't hear that again from you guys. If you've got a machine, it would have been nice to go over that. That's the communication.
If you were to reach out to me, I could have told you that.
What are the other options? What are the other options aside from during this race and taking from all of these municipalities? What's the other option on the table?
This is the option that I want.
What else did you explore?
My option is not to raise taxes, it's to be more efficient.
I'm speaking.
You're asking me a question.
I'm speaking. I'm still speaking in your afternoon meeting. What other options did you all consider? Did you?
I have one to propose.
If it includes raising taxes, I'm not for it.
Were there any other options explored or discussed or even thought of before you decided to launch this?
And, you know, I guess you could consider raising taxes. I haven't probably considered.
Since I'm on the paper to speak, but I wasn't going to speak about that, but this is just a thought. If you look. If you look on the Attorney General's website, you'll see that Perry County was funded a total of seven hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty total abatement funds to be distributed for opioid monies in the settlement. How many of those EMS calls and ambulance calls and things? Probably quite a few have been overdoses, have been people dying from opioids. Can you not? I know that's probably dropping the bucket, but I just thought about it because I had the number. Can that not be used?
I mean, it would be a one-time fix. It's not planning for the future. We need to plan for the future.
Okay, but that would give you time to work with everybody and plan.
We can't keep putting Band-Aids on things. We need to start planning and saving and.
Oh, I understand, but I mean, it's something to consider.
And some of that is restricted, some of it is.
No, no, it says two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six of that is unrestricted.
That's correct, but yes, the rest of it is.
But the big amount, I'm sure restricted, you would find it to be able to be used.
Possibly.
Because there's, we have an opioid problem in Perry County. As well as a homeless problem in Perry County. I see them every day.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know. Just a thought.
Yeah, it it could be a Band-Aid, a temporary solution. I mean, I do agree that you could do that, but we're looking for more long-term plans to make sure things are adequately funded so that we don't get in a shambles again because it's kind of a, it's been a mess.
Not having to make a decision, you know, so you look at other options is all I'm saying about, but you might be able to get something.
So long, excuse me, but long-term, I'm not understanding this. You want a long-term fix, but you're going to cut our economic development and backslide our, all the progress that our county has made.
The, the cities will have, the cities and the counties, the cities and the counties, we're not telling them what they have to do. If they have to cut economic development contracts, or if they have to cut paving, or if they have to do this or that. They also have other buckets that they can look at and be creative with and things like that. It's, it's all about prioritizing. What's important to you, what's important in Hamilton might not be the same as what's important in Tull City. That might not be the same as what's important in Troy or the county. So you just have to look at what you have.
That is a major portion of funding that is coming quick in removal when it's already been budgeted and planned for.
I, we haven't started our, I mean, we haven't finalized our budget, so.
I mean, we still have to, uh, funding TCDC, uh, the highway department. That's not changed.
I, I disagree. It's changing huge, a huge amount.
Not for funding it, it is.
And there's, there's other buckets that things can come out of also. You just have to get creative and be more efficient with your money and prioritize where you want it.
That's what we're asking for here, is to be creative.
That's, and I agree, and I think that that's, that's on each individual municipality in the county to do that. I mean, it, that's our responsibility as leaders to do that for the community. And instead of just, you know, it's real easy to sit up here and say, just raise the taxes. I mean, that's not what we're hired to do. I mean, we're hired to really get as efficient as we can. And at some point, we may have to raise taxes. But until, you know, for me personally, I'm speaking for myself, until we get as efficient as we can, I'm not willing to do it.
May I add? A statement a while ago is, you don't want to raise taxes because of the inefficiencies uh, within the government bodies, I guess. But unfortunately, you're taking money from, away from organizations who may be efficient, who's planned accordingly, who are working towards a goal and a budget with what they have. So in a sense, you have. So maybe there is a small tax increase in with these shifts of money to help lessen some of that burden. But to say, I won't raise taxes until I'm efficient, but you're taking away monies just to do that. You're still taking money from somebody to continue a program without changing any efficiencies, as far as I'm aware.
So I know it was said earlier that I know it was said earlier that it doesn't matter, you know, we're, we're totally different than every other county. But when you do the research, um, prior to any change in this rate, Perry County, there are eighty-six counties that have an economic development rate lower than Perry County, eighty-six. So we're one of six that are higher, the highest in, out of the ninety-two counties. And even after this rate, we're still higher than sixty-seven counties would remain lower than us. So it's not like we're at the bottom of the barrel. We're not taking it down to zero.
I understand.
So.
But to Mr. Cleveland and the mayors, these are numbers that have been nice to have upfront. Yep, we're cutting you, but you're still here.
Like.
Communication and information is important.
This information is provided.
And I know you, you can, you can stand your laurels on every day. Public meeting held, public meeting held, public meeting held. I get it. But at some point, maybe at this meeting, would be a nice, of a summary of, or in the next meeting, a summary of, because obviously we have a lot of concerned citizens, businesses, and entities here for a reason. These are the times to communicate that information. I get it, and it's hard to put it all together.
It is, and I, and I certainly can't go door to door. I have, I was asked at my last meetings to go door to door and I thought, that is unreasonable. I cannot do that. I mean, we can put it in the newspaper. We can put it on social media. We can put it on the YouTube channels. That's why we have the cameras. We can, you know, anybody who would email me, I get a lot of people email me questions and things, and I'm happy to provide that information. Anything that I know or have, I'll be happy to give to them.
But it's also unreasonable to ask the county to show up at a meeting to get all the information. I understand we have all these other areas.
What do you mean by that?
The room's full.
Okay, you're at, it's not unreasonable to ask the county to show up to a meeting to do what?
The entire population of the county to keep showing up at meetings.
I would love it. I, I've begged for, for years. I would love this room to be full every single time.
It's full right now.
Because I think that's wonderful because that's how.
Is there, is there any way that we can not have an argument every time somebody says something? And like, uh, listen with a response rather than like an argument? And, and anyone but one person, because this is always the gist. We do not get comments from anybody else. So what does anybody else? Well, Kelly, I.
It's not my fault that I speak up. If people ask questions, I speak up. I can't speak for Paul. Maybe he should talk to Paul. He absolutely can at any time.
Well, you said you are adequately prepared for this meeting.
I've got the information, but I don't think I'm adequately prepared to make it to you, no.
Okay. What's sad to me is I see what we always do. You know, we see the, think we have two doors. We can either raise taxes or cut services. And there's actually a door number three that we never look at. And the rate we are paid on Hoosier National Forest is the same rate we were paid in the nineteen sixties. And my husband, who used to think research was entertaining, researched a lot of this and found out that every other county has figured out how to get that tax raised. And we have not. We continue to think, oh, it's a federal government. We can't possibly get anything out of them. We can, but somebody's got to take the bull by the horns and do it.
I will say, I personally sat in meetings with Steve Bartels and Larry Bouchon, asking these very same questions. What can we do? What can Perry County do to get more money due to our Hoosier National Forest? And I haven't, I haven't been able to get anywhere. It's, it's bigger, it's, you know, there's all kinds of different areas you have to go through. And I do continue to ask questions.
It still has to be done because other people have figured out how to do it. And when you're being paid in nineteen sixties dollars and we've had three major inflationary periods, I mean, that rate has to be raised or we're just always screwed.
I agree. Maybe a, a more group effort would help with that.
When Katie's husband, Tony DiPaolo, passed away, uh, Katie gave me all of his files related to Hoosier National Forest and all the research he has done. And when Commissioner Cole got in office, I saw him walking down Main Street with Lisa. And I told him, I have a box of that. I'd love to sit down and go through it with you.
Yeah, he's actually one of them that met with Larry Bouchon.
When I've got that information, I'd be glad to share it because I want to help. It doesn't just benefit me, it benefits us all. And, and even his research on casino funding, which we all know is, would be nice to have a bigger pot of that. I've got it all. So when the county's ready to sit down, call me, I'll sit with you and help you get more money if it's there to be.
It's the first I'm hearing of it.
So I told Commissioner Cole.
I'll let you know.
Any other comments?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
I do want to make one. Can I make one comment? Okay, I do want to talk about the dispatch funding because there was an inequity there from two thousand twenty-one, whenever. Uh, and I was very much for squaring that up because Tull City was taking the brunt of the dispatch costs when they shouldn't have been. And I fought that fight with you, Mayor Hale, um, to make, and I think the county did a good job at that time, the leadership of the county to try to square that up and make it more even. And it's been a gradual progress to where, uh, we've come from. So it looks like the county paid in two thousand twenty-one a hundred and seventy-one thousand towards dispatch. Um, now we are paying
Six hundred.
Around six hundred thousand. So there's about a four hundred, four hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference that have been freed up from Tull City because the county has taken on a lot more of that burden. So I don't know what you've used, you know, those funds for or anything, but that's potentially another pocket that you could use to help with some grant matches and things, so.
And we have, we've used that money for increasing salaries for our police officers, as we all know is very important. So that's public safety. Uh, we've used it to help fund at full parks and recorations. Your parks are getting better with all the climate improvements. So we've used that money and continued to invest back in the community and, and.
And I think your portion will just continue to get smaller, especially with the PSAP.
Yes, I would hope so because it.
That's the intention.
It's my, and understanding it is the responsibility of the county to fund that, really, right?
That's the intention and that's why we're adding this PSAP tax increasing and so that we can do that.
Right, okay.
Public safety is important.
I just have a question. You notice that there's a lot of passionate people here that are voters, that voted you all in. You not taking us into consideration and going back to the drawing board because you can see, we're pretty upset. So yes, there may be an A and a B, but I think what Gary said, you need to sit down with all the entities that are affected. Because that is, just trickles down and we are affected. I don't think this is right. I don't care.
I know, us being small, small town, very small, that is a lot of edit money. And I just speak for Hamilton. Nothing's been improving Hamilton for years. And now I'm the clerk and I see this edit money go away and it's like, I, I, there's things that, we can start doing something because we, things haven't been getting done. And I, I guess I just feel that what would it hurt to, to, to the solution? I just table this room and get together with the clerks, Tull City, Troy, and the mayor, and a couple of people on here, and waste one month to lighten it up.
I think we have a certain deadline. This is our deadline, like August first.
August first is your deadline to approve it, I think. Well, I'm just a group.
I think it is. You have to turn it in.
Baker Tully's right there again.
Now, it's August first, right?
Yeah, you have to notify.
But the, the, the four thousand and change, that's significant to us. We are tiny but mighty, but that is a lot of money for our small budget. Same with Troy.
And I understand that. I completely understand that. But I want, when your residents call, I want them to have adequate services with EMS and everything else as well. Um, now, I don't forget also about your edit supplements that you get every year. So I have the two thousand twenty-three, I printed that off today, and two thousand twenty-four. So in two thousand twenty-four, it looks like Tull City will get an additional hundred and twenty-seven thousand five seventeen. Hamilton will get an additional twenty-seven thousand five eighty-five. Troy, one thousand four oh six, and then Perry County, two twenty-four, two seventy-four. So you get that in the. Well, it doesn't offset the cuts, but it helps cushion the difference. Yeah, it helps cushion the difference. I mean, when you're four thousand and you're going to get thirteen thousand, thirteen, I'm sorry, four thousand and thirteen hundred. It, it does help cushion the difference.
The, the deadline is August, you have to notify all the overlapping castings by August first if you're making a change. But if you want to make a change and have it effective by January one of twenty-five, you have to October thirty-first.
We have to plan for our budget. We have to know. So, I mean, we just went through that. Everybody will have to plan for their budget, so.
So do any of the other council, are, are all of you guys for this?
We'll have to vote during the minute.
Well, I mean, is anybody else having comments on why this is positive? With all of your community leadership in the room?
There, Dale.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm not as well-versed on this as, as Kelly offers, because Kelly's been researching this stuff for years. So I say I'm not as well-versed on this as, as Kelly is. You know, she's been looking over figures for, for many years. What's a shame is that the state mandates certain things from the county government. You know, we don't have a choice. We don't have a choice about the ambulance services and then the public service, the public safety things. And the, and the pie is always so big. You know, we've been, like I said, our ambulances, uh, we had a friend the other day in St. Mondrick, had an ATV accident, ninety-three years old, had to call the ambulance. Uh, the ambulance gets there, blows the radiator hose, can't transport. Luckily, South Spencer, Spencer County was able to and then got him lifeline into, you know, and things worked out okay. But we, we have a responsibility out there to, to make sure our ambulances, you know, are able to get to where they're going. And, uh, like I say, it's going to take, and we've got like this in several years. And that we can't completely justify everything in one year to get it back where it, where it should be. It's going to take a few years. And so I think some creative, um, on the county's part and Tull City, Hamilton, Troy, everybody's going to have to kind of.
And another thing about the jail, I'd like to say. Go ahead.
No, Dale's.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You keep throwing numbers out. Numbers are fine. People need more. And the thing is, if you keep taking money away from these small communities and from Tull City, services are going to go down. The, the quality of living is going to go down, and then you're going to lose people. So there goes more tax money out the door. These people need their money.
What's going to happen to people whenever there's no ambulance to pick them up? It's the same, it's the same thing. It's the same thing.
If you can't provide, that if we don't have the county jails, if we don't have the, uh, nine-one-one, the PSAP, if we don't have the EMS, you're not going to have economic development either. You've got to have them both. You can't, you can't just.
Why don't you compromise a little bit? I understand that you're totally against raising taxes, but everybody here is totally against this. Why, since you said there's going to be a balance coming back, a refund of edit money.
It's a supplement.
Something, okay, why, why don't you tax the other portion of that to taxes that's, and make that up? It takes so much from edit and Tull City and Hamilton, all the portion. When we are supplementing back, then we're even out the tax for the rest of it.
We can't pull the supplement back. It's something that's just.
Right, right, we did. We take that into account. So we don't lose anything.
It is. You, you're still going to get it.
Yeah, we're going to get it. I'm saying to tax the rest of them out, except that, take that much edit money out. I mean, there's got to be a solution sitting down, you know. I understand, it's, it's give or take, basically. I understand you don't want to raise taxes, I do though.
And priorities. And priority.
Right. You know, just, yeah, I, you know, I said, I, I just think there's a, there's a, there's a solution. What's the solution? And sometimes it means banning on what you don't want to do. I'm not saying all we want to do. It's, we have to ban.
Well, I certainly don't want to have to do this, but we do have to do this for the mandated services that we're required to offer. And, and everybody knows, you can look around, our jail population's going up. It's very easy to see, um, our crimes getting worse. Um, you know, that we're, I think it's in the budget, there's two more jail officers that they're maybe asking for, a couple more jail officers. So the operating expenses continue to increase. So, and that is a responsibility of everyone in the county, not just the county residents. So we need to make sure that we have adequate funding for that. That's the jail.
I, I think everybody's agreed with it, and I know I am. My thing is, is, you know, but we're taking, we're, the county's not good. I don't know. It's just like, can we not just sit down quickly and and, and ban a little bit on both, I think, raising taxes and taking this edit money instead of just taking this whole portion of edit money? I can't get something back, but that's not, when it comes to Chelsea, I mean, Troy and Hamilton, that's tough. We have done anything for years, so I know it's tough. That's what we look forward to doing this stuff, but nothing's been done for, I don't know, what decade? You mean like. I mean, taking has not been done a lot in the last, the last four or five years. Yeah.
I want to say one thing. Find the positive in this.
Right.
Okay? This is happening. Communication, talking is happening. In my opinion, that's what should have happened a long time ago, a while ago. Instead of it being added on a meeting, I'm not going to, at the June meeting, emailed out at two oh seven, added to the agenda at, on, at the June meeting, and then this getting pushed forward.
It wasn't added, it wasn't added on the June meeting. It was on the June meeting.
You had, okay, it discussed at the June meeting, the information was not sent out till June, till two oh seven. That's what, okay. But I'm new to politics. I mean, I'm new to local government.
I agree with you.
But, and I haven't got my opinion quite yet. But I've been in business for twenty-plus years. It's about teamwork. It's about putting together collaboration, sitting and talking. And to be honest, that's what I thought this was. And I feel that when we should, we should have more work sessions as council, the council, more work sessions, more work sessions as elected officials, city, towns, counties, all together. But right now, it just seems like there's this small. But right now, it just seems like there's this small group that's working individually and then they're coming and bringing it and it's just being rushed. And, and things need to slow down and have more collaboration and more input because we can all learn a lot from each other.
Exactly. That's what makes, that brings it together for, for us.
Mr. Semler, our, our last date for this is on April thirty-first.
We have to do a budget.
We have to do a budget. We have to let, the last date we can file this or make a change is on April thirty-first. Given all the confusion, the questions, the concerns, uh, when you're ready for it, I'm ready to make more to table this.
Being the sooner you have the information.
You have to have the numbers and the rates in order to do your budget or you won't know what revenues you're gonna bring in. And it'll affect Tell City, Calhoun and Troy, so that's actually not after.
Honestly, you can't put that on everybody here. You guys just presented this in June. So, and there's not been any discussion or collaboration on it. So putting it on the table that it has to be done so quickly, that's not on anybody else's, anybody, not anybody directly's shoulders. This was just brought to the table in June and now it's, and there's not been any work.
This was actually on our agenda in May and maybe then in April.
No numbers have been sent out.
Well, maybe no numbers, but it's been discussed.
But it was in public meetings.
It was at a public meeting.
You are acting on something that's gonna remove budget items from counties or the city yourselves, uh, city of Calhoun, Troy. Why would you have not called them and said, Mayor, we need to sit down. We've got an issue. You have a, Mr. Cal has the same responsibility you all do and his council. And Mayor, Mayor Graves and his council have the same responsibility you do. They have to act and work against a budget and they have to deliver services to their people, just like you do. How could you not think that it would be advisable to con, not contact them? But then turn around and say, but you got your public notice. Seriously, if you were gonna take four hundred thousand dollars away from me, I was the mayor of the city of Tell City, I, I'd say, wait a minute. What am I supposed to do? Why weren't you on my door six months ago saying, we got a problem, let's work it out and maybe we could have? That's all I'm saying. That's why I tried to say, Jenny, um, I don't know if it came across very well. And the same with us, Perry County Development Corporation. Maybe there's something that we could do. But yet, Kelly, you never mentioned this at a single board meeting. Randy never mentioned this at a si, single board meeting. Why not? If this is an issue, we, I mean, we, we solve problems together. That's the thing that concerns me. We may still end up in the same place that we are right now where something's gotta give and someone's going to get less. And, and ultimately, if that was made collectively and you said, well, in the end, we just can't get there, this is what we gotta do. But clearly, you didn't engage the conversation past a small group of people. Not only are you kind of throwing it at your council after having said you apparently were gonna review it and, and look at options, you're throwing it at them now. Asking them with a really tight timeframe, they gotta take action on this. And you didn't talk to the mayor of Tell City about it and you expected him to call you after a notice? Come on. I mean, you're taking money out of his budget. When's he supposed to plan? So that's the thing that upset me.
I was gonna say.
They don't reach out to me.
Hang on.
I mean, I'm just telling you. I mean, if you want to compare that.
I, no, what I want you to say is just that.
This is a county council responsibility.
And it is your responsibility.
Absolutely.
Hey, first, EMS, I mean, it's, obviously, it's, it's been impactful in my family's life. Nobody in here would say otherwise. Um, I understand the need for a jail. I wish it wasn't as needed as it is. I am not against this. I am not against the dispatch. Um, I'm not against any of that. But the truth of the matter is, is there are a lot of people that are in responsible positions, just like you all, who probably could have talked through some ideas, but instead, however many days before today, they got a notice that basically says, guess what? You just got a cut in your budget. Sorry, we have to do what we have to do because we have a responsibility and you do, but so do they. And, and we as an organization that's trying to help all of you, we would have loved to have been able to try and help too. Maybe there was something that we could do and you didn't bring that to us and you couldn't. And, and don't, please don't say they could have come to us. You were, you're, you have the purse strings. We know who's in charge. We know ultimately you all make that decision. We're at your mercy. As county residents, I live there, if I was in Tell City, I am one too. We understand that, but have the courtesy to talk to them and engage them where they have time to think this through and work with you. That's the thing that disappoints me. Not that you're trying to fight for what I think is right too. I mean, my wife's met was in the medical profession. I get it. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you have a, you have a, the same courtesy you would like, extend it to the others that are in the same position as you are. That's all I'm saying. Because we're in eleventh hour and you're in a pickle and you are. I get it. You're in a pickle. And I don't know what to do about it because we don't have time. I'm asking you to table it and give us at least a little more time.
David, I'll second Paul's motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. He never asked for a motion. All of a sudden you come. Um, I really, I really appreciate all you guys putting out the information. And it's, it's made me think a lot. I am not in favor of raising taxes, okay? I am not on the people of Perry County. Maybe, I mean, this will delay it a lot, but maybe we should put it on a referendum, let all the people of Perry County decide whether they want their taxes raised. I mean, it, this, this room is filled, okay? I'm sure it doesn't represent all of Perry County. So I think it needs to be voted on in a referendum.
I'm gonna make one comment, and I'm in no way supporting and saying raise taxes, so I don't want anybody to misinterpret what I'm saying. I know, I can hear Facebook now, rhetoric and motions and all that run high, but I'm very passionate about the community. I love my residents. I love the county residents. We're all great. And I'm gonna go back to what David, everyone has said. I would have showed the county councils and the county commissioners, if I was gonna send you an email and say, hey, we're gonna take as much from you, I would have called you and said, hey, let's sit down and talk about this. I would have showed you that respect. And I'm just, I'm saddened that it wasn't done and I really hope in the future we can work together because I don't think this room would have one person in it, had we all sat down and had a discussion, have really understood the impact, hearing some of the numbers Kelly had. It helps. I'm trying to understand it. That, I think it would have, it's taken all this away. It would have been solved.
We need that. We need money for our emergency.
I agree.
There's just no pressure. I had that hard.
I don't, I'm not disagree with you.
I had, you know, she needed to go to Louisville and had nobody to take her. They had to call Crawford County, I think, to get an ambulance here and, uh, it, it's a real, it's a real mess.
Had I sat down and explained to, to, to the leaders of the community, the key stakeholders in this that it affects, it would have made it a lot better. Communication, communication, communication.
Community relationships.
How many times we hear at meetings that emails aren't returned, emails aren't returned, emails. I didn't get it. We, that's the problem. If we could just start working together and not working apart. My phone number, everyone of you should have. If you don't, I'll send it to you tonight or email it out. Call me. I'm not a spirited person, I promise. I wanna sit down and work with you. That's all I'm asking. It's very simple.
I think it's a matter of thinking outside the box and looking for other ways. I just gave you one fun. Did anybody ever think to ask the township trustee how much money's in their accounts for EMS? We pay fire. We pay fire departments. Nobody's ever asked me for any money.
We have fire departments reaching out saying they don't have enough.
Well, they're increasing their budgets, but.
That's another problem.
I'm just saying, nobody ever reached out to me. There's funding there through the township, my township. I know the ones in the county don't have much. But there's quite a big little kitty sitting there that can be used for some of this. If we're holding on to it for like a natural disaster or something that might come along, uh, you know, that money is your taxpayer dollars that I'm giving out.
If I can make one comment, then I'm going home. Part of the responsibilities of a good public servant on the city council or the county council or even nationally is making hard decisions. Sometimes those hard decisions involve raising taxes. It's easy to cut taxes, very easy to cut taxes, just do away with services. You know, when Tell City had the swimming pool that was in disrepair, it could have very easily just closed. You know, that would have been the cheapest thing to do and probably the most efficient. Running a swimming pool is not efficiency. You don't make money off a swimming pool, but it's a valuable quality of life service that the city provides to all county residents. So I would just make one additional point. Rethink this thing. I, I, I'm not questioning needing more money for EMS or for the jails or for even the PISA. But rethink it. Rethink it. How much would it cost somebody? We're talking about raising income taxes, not property taxes, okay? And if you raised income taxes from a buck forty to buck sixty-three, I think it would generate the same amount over here. We have a mid-forty that you're doing this, I think. I'm not a good mathematician, but thank you. Good night.
I feel you have a big time constraint here and I'm respectful of that, but I also see that there is time to get community leaders together and to work on a, a solution and to, to get back and to, uh, re, relook at this, uh, with a more community, uh, focused mind. And, uh, I would appreciate if you could do that.
Kelly, where are we at if this, if we table it and we miss the deadline? Are, are you saying like our EMS services are going to suffer greatly if we put this off for six years or something like that?
We need to start planning now because we're just now getting up to adequately having the equipment that we need and some of it has three-year lifespan, five, seven, eight, you know, it just depends. And we, we need another ambulance in the queue and it's, you know, there's a, there's a two-year waiting period, but we gotta go ahead and get one ordered. And we get, we just need to get on this quicker than not because, you know, that's something again that everybody expects that they're gonna have adequate service. You know, I listened to a dispatch call, a, a recording of a dispatch call that we had one ambulance in the county. And the gentleman who was working, I don't know who it was or what, if they were EMT or paramedic. Uh, there was another call came in. They said, we have to go out of town, let's just pray nothing happens. We cannot have that. We cannot have that for any residents. We have to make sure we have at minimum two, if not three, at all times to have proper coverage for the entire community. There's just, I mean, that's, that's very important to me that we, you know, when you pick up the call, if you need something in the worst situation of your life, that somebody's gonna be on the end of that dispatch line. And I think we have a great dispatch. I think, I think Tell City Dispatch does a stellar job. But I wanna make sure that we keep up with the equipment and, you know, the salary, everything that we need to keep that in place as well as the EMS is the other part, you know, we, they can do everything they can do in dispatch, but if there's no EMS, then if nobody's coming and we have to wait for Spencer County or DuBois County or whatever, I just, it's just suffered so long that I just feel like we have to do something to make sure that this doesn't go backwards.
Right, and excuse my ignorance, but what does the hospital have an obligation to making sure?
It's a county wide, it's a county service.
Okay.
EMS is a county.
So the hospital doesn't have an obligation whatsoever to help make sure that there's funds there or any.
No, we contract with the hospital. We give them a subsidy based upon their runs and what they collect from insurance and those type of things. That's correct, David, right? We give them a subsidy and then we're also required to, uh, provide all their equipment. So, I mean, they're, they have on their ambulances right now, equipment that is outdated. That if it goes bad right now, if they're on a call and it goes bad, they don't have, you know, we have some on order or whatever because we're doing ARP funds and we're bringing that back up, but if it wasn't for that, there was no funding set aside. Then we weren't bringing enough revenue in the county for the past several years to even be able to have a reserve for that type of thing. They weren't even adequately funding the loss. So we just wanna make sure that's, that's one of the.
How about a solution? To me, when's your twelfth hour? If you'd like to get this budget in provision, when's your twelfth hour?
I mean, to me, it's now.
I mean, right now.
Because we need to move forward with letting the cities know what they're gonna have, what they can budget. We need to know as a county so that we can begin those conversations because if we don't know the rates, we don't know what's enough to expect.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, that it isn't the twelfth hour when at less than third, because to me, it seems like the solution is is we got, you got representatives from Troy, Calhoun and Tell City who's been hard to represent our people. And that's Mayor Graves, not for Calhoun. Mayor Calhoun somewhere, how about he left an hour? The same thing as Troy, when we get together, you, you put, you come together and then we talk and, and make a special session or special hearing before your deadline.
So are you saying August first?
That's just it.
August first is our, because I know that's when budgets.
That's when we need to have things, we need to have things turned in so that you know what's happening.
Does it have to? Are we out of money to the point where we have to economic development dollars?
Right.
And opioid money and not use it for getting a house? And I mean, are, is there no other money that you can take this time?
We didn't suggest opioid money.
I, I suggest, I'm telling you, the township has money for fire and EMS. Nobody's asked me.
Your Tell City Troy Township has that, but the other county township trustees don't have that.
So can I not budget part of that money in my CDs that's been there, that's now getting interest? Can I not budget some of that to go into my fire fund?
I'm not positive we can charge Tell City and not everybody because it's a countywide service.
It's Troy Township.
Well, that's, that's, okay.
That's Calhoun, Tell City and Troy.
I understand, but there's other townships and I don't know that we can single yours out and say, we're gonna take your money, but we're not gonna charge the rest.
So that's a state board of accounts question.
There's, there's interwanal agreements and things like that.
Right, yeah, state board.
You may not be able to do that.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's, that's why the edit funds didn't work for solid waves because everybody wasn't on board.
Jenny, you're not talking about future money.
No.
Well, how much money are you needing? Tell me how much money you're needing.
Well, we just, like, we just, like, uh, we spent seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on a.
How much?
We just spent seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on an ambulance system.
Seven hundred seventy-five thousand for that equipment.
Uh, we, there's.
And we're not properly funding the subsidy either, so that's what this will help too. Because there's several hundred thousand.
Well, here's your opioid money and I have money. That would probably come close to seven hundred and some odd thousand.
That's a one-time fix. We're, we're trying to plan for the future. And the opioid funds, you know, that, there, there may be other things that can be used.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I know a lot of you called.
Are you going to continue to take money out of the edit funds?
That's my next question.
You know, I mean, if you're planning for the future by taking edit funds, so then you seem to sound like your answer to this is to always take edit funds in the future.
When, when the rate is changed, it will stay that rate until that rate changes again, but what you have to understand is as the wages increase, you will collect more money. It, no matter, you know, even if the rate's lower, as people's wages increase, it's times the rate, so you'll still be collecting more money.
But the question wasn't answered. Are you gonna come back to the well, edit money for money, more money? I mean, I'm doing the budget. Con and they are already working on budgets now and we've gotta go back and start over a lot of stuff because of this change. So you're gonna come back to us next July twenty-fifth and say, sorry, city, we're taking another four hundred we need it.
I mean, I, I don't.
Because I can stop that very easily by bonding. You guys can touch it once I do a bond. Done.
I don't intend on that, but I mean, I don't, I can't speak for everybody else.
I just wanna hear that because you're right, edit money is gonna go up based off dollars, but when you're, are you gonna keep coming back to the well every year and let it drop? Chris, and something else is, we, we can, if we do do this, we can take another look at this in a year from now.
And see what it looks like and see if we can.
If it's not. That's the problem. I saw the three-year edit commitment plan I filed, basically told you all my name plan. You knew what I was doing and you're like, yeah, you're gonna take it. But that's a.
No, you can, you can change your edit plan.
Sure, I've done that, but that was just my concern. And lastly, when the city adopts an ordinance, this is an ordinance, right?
Yeah.
We do the first reading, we do a second, third reading by title only. Does the county do that? Yes. So if, if, you have to, for second, third reading by title only, if it is not unanimous, you cannot take a vote on it tonight. Is that correct? Maybe. Just check that out.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Nobody disagrees. Our public safety, our ambulances, our, our dispatch, okay? And I'm not being smart when I ask this. Is the addition to the courthouse, public safety, could that not be put off another year and that money?
I'm asking a question because before, when you were asked, when you were looking at all this, why don't you take that into consideration and push that back a year or two? You can't because that money's restricted. It can only be used for capital projects on county buildings. It cannot be used for any. It cannot be used for anything else. You can't take it and use it for buying an ambulance. You can't take it and use it for anything else besides capital projects on a building. That's why it was used for that specific reason because there, you can't use it for operating expenses at the jail or dispatch, you're not allowed to, it's state restricted.
How it looks to the public that you're doing all this.
But it's state restricted.
I just, it's like you're stealing computer to pay Paul and it looks like. I mean, I hope you listen to your constituents out here and what we feel and how we, I mean, we all agree it needs to be done, but there needs to be collaboration and it needs to be looked at with other people that have bright ideas too.
Okay, but the funds cannot be used, the fine business, I'm just letting you know those are restricted.
That you may have planned for building improvements in the general fund and shift stuff around, could you not?
Yep, no, we have cap, we have a fund set aside for.
For, as, as a general fund?
For maintenance.
And that could be, those other funds could be used for that, no?
Not whenever it's a special home rule fund or certain things, you, you know.
I'm just not saying, but you mean one pot to pay, other pot to redo.
Well, the general, sure, but you can't, not like, not some of these restricted funds or home rule funds.
I was just asking, sorry, I mean, yeah, I support the EMS stuff, I do. I just wish it was done in a better way of communication.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna speak for Warren.
Warren, God knows, I support the ambulance service and the police department. I listen to the ambulance service 24 hours a day. The problem I see, we're putting a lot of these miles on these ambulances and we need another one, there's no doubt, because if we got the ambulances in town, it makes my job a lot easier. But why can't, we can't contract for a private firm to do our transfers from Perry County to Orangeville, Evansville, Louisville instead of tying up one of our ambulances and putting all these extra miles on them?
You realize how much more money that's gonna cost on county?
No, if they contract it, everyone has to pay for it.
The ambulance service costs will skyrocket.
Yeah, but, but, so does the ambulance service charge every time they go pick up Mrs. So-and-so who fell out of her chair four times in one day?
I think they are charging now.
I'm not sure how they bill that.
I think they are. You know, used to, we had to pick up, if our family members fell out of bed or out of a chair, the family picked them up. I've, I've heard them call for the ambulance to take somebody to a doctor's appointment. That should be a taxi service, that should, our ambulance should not be used as a taxi service. The people are taking advantage of our ambulance service and we're putting extra miles on these ambulances that we need to keep here in the county. And not, they had one, I think yesterday they broke down out of the county again. So I mean.
New ambulances break down too often.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
To answer your question, I'm not sure about the private service, that the hospital would even want that because they want those transfers because that's where they generate quite a bit of revenue, you know, to take them wherever they're taking them. So I don't think that they want us to pay a service to take their runs somewhere.
We shouldn't have payment service. If the company comes in and does it, let them do the billing to those people that they're transferring. Unless it's some life, you know, life support where they have to go right away, then our ambulance can do it, but just routine transfers that somebody's sitting up on the second floor and the doctor decides, well, they need to go to the beach or St. Mary's, wherever, and they have to wait three or four hours for an ambulance to get here. These private firms could be taking those and they could be the ones billing the insurance.
But those private firms are hard to find.
Yeah.
And they're always a supervisor and you would.
The only ones that private firms are gonna transfer for are ones that's got good insurance. They're not gonna take your, your Medicaid.
I don't think they come up and say, "You got insurance covering me right now to transfer here."
Well, I don't think the hospital.
Well, I think the records on, in the computer.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the way to keep our ambulance in better shape, keep them here in the county, because we need them here.
I agree, without a doubt, I worked.
Well, I did too. I worked this county as an EMT, we had two ambulances, one in council, one in TELCITY.
But then again, like if, if my son is at the hospital and they say, "We're not equipped to handle what he has going on, we're gonna have to transfer him," I would much rather know that the ambulance service in Perry County can transfer him.
You have to get advanced life support and they, they've got basic advance. It's all which ambulance is available, they might have to wait for the advanced life support ambulance to be available coming back from another run. All the ambulance are not equipped the same.
All did you, did you move a motion on board?
I, I did.
Keith, did you second it?
I seconded it.
What was the motion?
To table.
What was your motion?
Table.
It's okay.
Yeah, wait a second.
Motion for Paul, for Paul to table, second by Keith, to take, uh, to, uh, to table. Paul's in favor, see what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Paul's nay?
Nay.
Nay. What was that, or nay?
Hold your hand, hold your hand. Nay. We want to do it again? Nay.
Okay, you want another motion?
Um, I would like to know about the, Jason, can you tell us about the, are you aware of the first reading, second reading?
Doubt or not.
All right, if you can. Oh. We can't hear back here.
Thank you.
Is he here?
Can you read that out loud to us, Chris?
Yeah, go ahead.
Unanimous consent of the members present is required to pass an ordinance on the same day with the same meeting which is introduced.
If it's not unanimous, you have to have another meeting.
Forty-eight hours, thank you.
Unless it's, unless it's a real.
So we can have another meeting in forty-eight hours. I guess, I guess my question is how do you propose to plan these things? What is your option?
All right, you got the option.
What's your option? I, I would like to know from, from Keith and Paul, what are your?
All right, another option would be we keep the edit rate exactly the way it is. Our current tax, county general tax is a dollar forty. We were at a dollar eighty until the detention center was paid off, it got down to a dollar forty. If we mention like Melory Cleveland mentioned, if we do the rest of it, that'll put our county general at about tax rate of a dollar sixty-three. We can revisit it next year and tweak it again. But right now, if we edit, we stay the way it is, we have money for emergency medical service. Everything else would be changed, but edit money would stay the same. The overall county rate would go to 163.
So an increase in taxes, a 1.23?
An increase in taxes. We need these services, but we don't wanna pay for them, but yet we have to.
You said it was a dollar eighty before.
It used to be a dollar eighty until the detention center was paid off, now it dropped down to a dollar forty. So if we do this, we halfway in the middle at a dollar, actually a dollar sixty, it's still reduction of what you've been paying for the last 15 years, but a little more than what you would be paying. So I'm making a motion to do that.
I second that.
Uh, motion by Paul. Aye.
Hold your hand.
Next tax at 1.63.
Answer me.
Second by Keith.
So the motion is to raise the tax rate from 1.4 to 1.63.
Whatever it takes to do the rest of it, sir, I'll just pencil it in real quick.
As a taxpayer, I'm right with that.
But you might have to publish that.
Yeah, you have to.
Oh, yeah, you can't hear.
Okay, sure.
I think if we're gonna raise taxes, we need to put that on a referendum for the, uh, everybody in Perry County.
I agree with what you're saying.
Rachel's not here, is she? I don't think there's anybody, we don't get it on the ballot.
Just four years ago, I guess you're tweaking it.
I'm not interested in that, but everybody else.
I'm not saying.
General, I'll get it playing away, you know. This, this is all. Everybody in Perry County, not, not a whole bunch of people in Wounded. It's everybody in, in Perry County.
I don't think it's.
I think, I think that we need to, uh.
I, I'm not sure of that.
Put it on a referendum.
Even if there was a statute to allow that, I think it's too late for this election.
This, for no members.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need to get the funding correct. Are the, are the attorneys that correct? Are they correct?
Make motion.
What's a new ambulance cost?
About $200,000. If, I mean, if it's.
About two hundred and fifty-five refurbishable or refurbished equipment.
Well, refurbished one, which is, with the ones we are getting that have boxes that can be redone every, like twice, maybe three times. But they get a whole new chassis and engine, so that's what we've been going with. And not including the, for $100,000 worth of other equipment that we have to continue to replace. We can't get in a situation like we're in now.
Yep, and they have to all be the same, they have to all have the same equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, so was there a motion or what?
There was.
Yeah, I guess it died because it's not an.
We didn't vote here.
We didn't vote.
Not only.
They said we didn't.
No, I don't know.
We have to advertise, we would have to re-advertise an increase in tax rate. We did, we advertised for no increase in the tax rate, he's, he is asking for an increase in tax rate. We'd have to advertise that to the vote.
You make a motion to advertise that, Paul?
Sure.
I'd second that. The people that's against it, speak up.
What are your motion for?
To raise the tax rate from 1.4, to advertise to raise the tax rate from 1.4 to 1.63.
Well, double-check that math, but, here's a check it tomorrow, it's not for sure, but. Um, I'll figure it real quick, about 1.63.
Yeah, it'd be 1.63 because per.
1.23.
We're, I'm using 1.23, so 1.4 plus 1.23 is 1.63.
Yeah.
I think everybody's against, you know, nobody wants to pay more than that.
I don't, but, but, I want, I want services.
We gotta get the EMS back working.
If you want the service, you gotta pay for it.
And I wanna, you know, I think that we need to be C D C.
Or, or you streamline your budget. What you're talking about doing though, this requires a whole, we have to go through this whole, I'd have to go through this whole process again. I mean, we just, it, we can't make a motion to just do that.
Well, I can't vote for this.
All right, well, that's fine. I think I need to go ahead and, uh, try to read the, uh, ordinance and if it, it fails, it fails. If it requires like a full, isn't that right?
Well, I mean, you gotta, you got a motion pending on the floor with a second, you need to vote on it.
A motion to do what? Yeah.
Listen, I just told you.
All those in favor? Single for a side, aye?
Hold your hands up, we wanna see who's voting yes and no.
No.
A pos. Wow.
Man, what was your vote?
No.
No, I couldn't see your hand, I'm.
Yeah, I said no.
Okay, I can't hear, I had to say, oh.
So what's that mean? So what, what's that mean?
We gotta go back to the drawing room.
So you won't even consider Jenny's proposition to give you the money, you won't reach out to Dick or Tilly and consider that as an option and then maybe tangle this issue till next year when we can reevaluate the subject and speak with community leadership and evaluate what your, your options are?
She wouldn't have near enough money to fund the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we need and I'm not even sure it would be legal to take from one township trustee. We'd find, yeah, I mean. And not all other, you know, the whole idea is to have reoccurring funds to plan, set them back for the future.
Right, but it's, but it is to.
Everyone in this room is, aside you, is in the sense of this option that you won't consider.
Everybody in this room is not Perry County as a whole, this, this is not Perry County. That's why I'd say we need a referendum to raise taxes because.
I say get your framework together, think out of the box, look for other funds, you can pull fun and get creative.
Kelly, when you say the cities are getting supplemental, let's see edit.
Supplemental edit.
Edit every year, what is that amount? Two percent.
I have that from last year and this year.
Yeah, we get it, we'll get it out here in the year.
It's a, if you get it every year.
You get it, I don't know what time of the year you get it, but you get it. It's, so 2023, Perry County got 199,000, TELCITY got 112,000, Hamilton 25,000 and Troy 1,297. 2024, the supplemental edit that will be given is Perry County 224,000, TELCITY 127,000, Hamilton 27,585 and Troy 1,00406.
I mean, that's just what I was thinking, I mean, I don't know what TELCITY's budget is out of all their, out of that money also, but I mean, that's what I was thinking, could the, could the cities and mayor get together and can they put in a little bit of edit money and tax, and add a tax for the rest? So you're kinda taking a little, little bit from here and also you're spreading it out.
I think that would require an interloble agreement and then an adjustment of the tax still.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I'm just, I think, you know, of a solution that, that you kind of work together.
I understand what you're saying.
That's, that's.
No, I, I appreciate it, I understand, you see, I'm set.
Thank you.
So when's the next meeting?
Hey, Chris?
Oh.
Chris Goffin. Uh, shouldn't I just go ahead and read this ordinance and if it fails, it fails?
That, yeah, I mean, that's your call, but yeah.
I mean, what else are we gonna do?
What's that second, third reading might be the issue, right, Chris?
We don't have to do a third reading, but you do have to have.
A second, third reading by title only to adopt the one, how is it said?
The second, third, uh, would be entitled only, but we have to have a.
Another read.
Another read, yes.
You don't have to have a second, third reading, statute just says you have to have unanimous though or you have to have another read, that's what the statute says.
So I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance. Okay, an ordinance modifying the local income tax rate for Perry County Indiana. Be ordained by the county council of Perry County in council that need now exist to modify the local income tax rates imposed in the following way. We have an allocation rate category, existing local income tax rate and a proposed rate. The certified shares is, is now at 0.528, proposed rate would be 5.28. Public safety is now 0.3220 and the proposed would be 0.3520. Economic development is now at 0.55, proposed 0.32. Fire tax relief, there's no change, special purpose rate, there's no change. Correctional or rehabilitation facilities, uh, it now exists at 0%, it would be 0.1%. And then emergency medical services now, uh, existing rate is 0.0 and it would be, proposed local income tax rate would be 0.1. And staffing expenses for state judicial system, uh, existing is 0, proposed is 0. The total rate would be 1.4 and proposed local income tax rate would also be 1.4, no change. The local income tax rates proposed budget will become effective on October 1st, 2024. A portion of the public safety revenue will be directed to the public safety agency point, PSAT of the county. This revenue will be allocated to PSAT prior to the distribution of the remainder of the public safety revenue. Allocation category, public safety, existing rate 0.33, 0.3220, proposed open test rate 0.3520. Local income tax, public safety access point rate, existing PSAT rate 0.0720, proposed PSAT rate 0.102. Be further ordained that public caring was held on the proposed local income tax modifications in July 25th, we, we for proper notice of the public caring was provided pursuant to IC 5-3-4. And then I would, I guess entertain a motion for a second and third reading in name only. An ordinance, I probably, I would entertain that motion. Someone make a motion?
Thank you.
Back second? Okay, so our second, third reading is going, is, uh, in name only. An ordinance modifying the local income taxes rates of Perry County, Indiana. And now I would call for a vote to adopt the ordinance.
I'm actually, if we didn't vote on, everybody, first made a motion in second, don't everybody have to vote on that? Before the second, third reading? Is that right?
Yeah.
Whether it was motion made in second, nobody voted on it.
You mean to have the second, third reading?
Yeah, I think everybody should vote on it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
I'm glad you're back, buddy, I'm glad.
Thank you.
So motion made by Stan, second by.
Please, please, Stan, second by Gail, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Now they vote, no, you can't have the other reading.
Right.
Someone has.
So we go ahead and read.
So who voted no? Anyone?
No.
Position?
So now you read it by title, am I right?
Now I'll read it by title only. An ordinance modifying the local income tax rate of Perry County Indiana. I gotta do, I gotta read that twice. An ordinance modifying the local income tax rates of Perry County Indiana. And I would call for a motion. Motion by Gail. Second by Stan, all of the favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
So. Failed.
So now what? Is there another meeting or what?
What?
What's next?
I guess Keith, do you have a solution or another option that we can consider?
You can't do anything tonight, so we'll just move on from here.
I make, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Keith. My Carol, Earl, all of the thirds, say aye. All of the nays, motion carries seven zero.
David, I'm being interrupted. What was that vote? I didn't hear it.
Seven, oh, which one? The previous, six one.
So will there be another meeting that we need to know about?
Not this time.
So it's just, that's it?
I mean, unless someone can, I mean, those opposing, you know, unless we can come up with something else or a different option.
I mean, you're not going to like pull another meeting between now and August 1st when we have to have a budget done?
I mean.
I don't think.
You'd have to have 10 day notice.
Tell you what, I make myself available next week. You guys call me, email me, text me, whatever. You guys gotta send smoke signals or come to the house.
The problem is, if we have another hearing, we have to have a 10 day notice. We have to do that all again.
Okay, it'll be August 1st for them.
It's just, it's going to call the problem. And so we're just not going to be properly funded.
Our budgets do.
Yeah, I totally understand. That's why we tried to do this before then. We're just going to have, we're not going to be properly funded and then that we explain to do, so. That's unfortunate. Okay, so did you close the hearing?
Okay, we agree, yeah.
Okay, so we need to.
So now we're holding our regular meeting?
What's that?
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah. The public hearing is over. Anybody willing to stay for a regular meeting or? So this time I'm calling, I'm calling our regular meeting under order. We're starting over again.
Motion made for a review.
Motion by all of the parties, second by Earl, all of the thirds, say aye. Motion carrying six zero.
I have a question.
Seven zero.
Can I ask a question? Okay, go to the next item.
Uh, you guys want us, you want us to come back for the shelter?
If you want to.
Huh? Well, I know, I know, but everybody's tired.
It's fine. Welcome to speak. If you want to stay and speak.
I still want to give you my money.
Welcome to speak.
It's, I'm sorry.
It's okay, but you're, you're right on the camera. We might want to. I mean, I don't mind if you are.
I don't want to be. I was here to discuss the shelter and the opioid, but everybody's tired.
No, 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 we're fine. We're here. We have a meeting. That's what we're here for.
All right, I'm fine, wait.
No, you're next.
You're next.
For now?
You're next.
This will be real quick.
Okay, we started our next meeting, so if everyone could please just.
Want to go now? My name's Jenny Bruner, and I'm the executive director of the Oaks Transitional House for Women and Children. We became a 501(c)(3) last October. We're incorporated. We have a strong board. We have two members of the sheriff's department, a public health nurse, Lincoln Hills Development, and myself, social worker, and Crystal Moskus, who's got tons of experience, are in social work, and also another social worker. So I'm here to talk about that. We're located at 200 and a half North Fifth Street in Canton, known as the Oaks, the Old Gentry Funeral Home, if you will. I have quite a few memories there, but I just come to talk to you about three objectives tonight. Okay, we have a homeless population here, and I know you all see it increasing. If you go behind the flood wall, you'll see it. And as a trustee, I see it really often. Their county tax dollars so far this year have been $3,005, spending hotel bills for people who are homeless until we can get them permanent housing, get them to drug rehab. I kind of take my job a little serious because I'm a social services person and want to get them the help that they need and not just say, and tents are great, don't get me wrong, they help, Catholic charities tents help, but we want to get them off the streets. We want to find out why they're there, you know, what kind of help do they need? If, you know, so the explanation of the program as far as what the shelter is going to do, we are, we are completely done. We are completely done. The shelter is ready to go with dishes, I mean, everything, bedding, donations, community service workers. I put them to work, they painted, I had a retired electrician to get us up to code. Everything's been volunteered. We have not spent a single dollar other than the donations that we have. And so we're zoned properly. For a while, we thought that was an issue. It's not. We're zoned right where we need to be. We have a lease with the Canton Food Pantry. That lease goes into effect September 1st. We have also a insurance has been obtained for liability and renter's insurance. We have an ongoing fundraising committee. They're doing a heck of a job. We have a comedy show at Tell City Auditorium this Sunday. For any of you that might want tickets, all that money goes to the shelter. We have a opportunity to make as much as $10,000 on that comedy show. So that's a pretty big fundraiser. They've done several other fundraisers as well. We have a marketing team. We now have our Facebook and our website up and running. I have those links, but you all probably know more, more about them. Some of you I know have looked at them and things. The mission statement of the Oaks is the purpose of the Oaks Transitional House for Women and Children is to provide safe and supportive temporary housing to women with or without children in Perry County. Our goal is to empower these women to create a better future by promoting self-sufficiency with a hands-up approach, not a hands-out approach. In other words, they're going to come to the shelter, they're going to have a social worker there, Safe Haven's going to have staff employees there. It's going to help them to get their Medicaid, their WIC, get them jobs, training for jobs, whatever it is that they need, whatever service it is that they need. That's what transitional housing does. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Crystal, and she's just going to speak for a minute. The purpose of why I'm here is because of the opioid monies that we feel like we, many other counties have actually started up shelters and used the money and the opioid monies for, for starting up their shelter. And we have Narcan on the outside of our apartment for people who need that. We've made people aware of it in the neighborhood and law enforcement aware of it, which is used to, you know, treat someone who's overdosed with opioids. So any questions that you all might have?
I have one. How many at a time can you take?
We can take two women now and up to four children. So one woman, maybe six kids, or two women, I mean, just, you know, it depends on how many children they're going to have. But our plan's to go bigger. We started small because this operation just, they said, take it for 300 a month, take it. Utility money's all we want. Get your own insurance. It was an opportunity to help a couple of women anyway. And then down the road, we'll get funding, we'll get more government grants, matching grants, and we'll go bigger. We've already looked at a couple of places that we would like to be. I have full support of Mayor Smokey Graves to do this project, and Lee Hall, as well as John Pauling. So I feel like, you know, we're ready to roll. We just need some more funding to get, to get this thing moving. Fundraising is good, but, and there's money out there, so asking you all to consider some of the opioid money to fund our project.
Okay.
And we haven't been to the commissioners. That's our next.
What is your request for? What's coming out?
We're thinking, Crystal, yearly, we've tried to do a budget. It's really hard when you've never, you know, you're starting up and you really don't know. I don't know, 50,000 would probably get us through.
We're, we're looking for start of fees.
I mean, do you have a plan with like what, what it would be used for, and then you could give us a list of?
Yes, we do have that. We do have a budget that we are thinking that we could probably go with at this time. So, I mean, we do have the food pantry, which will supply us with some of the food, but obviously there'll have to be, you know, other things. And the girls will pay a fee, and they will get a job. And we don't take domestic violence victims. We're going to get them to the shelter, but they need to be safe. They're not safe there. So we've worked with the Perry County Probation Department, yes, probation department. We've got a meeting with them. Maybe a woman's getting out of jail, no family, don't know where she's going to go. They're going to be on probation. They're going to be drug tested. We can drug test them anytime we want because we got a health nurse on staff. So, you know, that's kind of.
If they just live there, she'll get on her feet.
We're, we're hoping six to nine months. It just depends on the women, you know, you don't know where they're coming from. So we can't really say, but.
I think some of this information here will, will help just a little bit, and then you can further develop your, your questions from that.
Yeah.
Just a little more of the, the program information. First of all, again, we are looking to assess some of the opioid settlement monies. But with those opioid, excuse me, I can't pronounce the word opioid monies. They ask that you support evidence-based prevention, treatment, recovery, harm reduction, and services to expand behavioral health. Our plans to meet those requirements will become NARR certified. That's the National Alliance for Recovery Residents. We will be doing that, providing evidence-based services, and it will also qualify us for federal funding. So not only will we be functioning at a high-quality level to meet these needs, it, it will stabilize our, our funding sources and our abilities. We already have an MOU with Safe Haven, and they will provide peer recovery coaches. So they will be in the home modeling and getting them to the health services they, they need. They'll first develop a, an assessment of that individual, so this is individual treatment. And we're, we're looking at some of the things that come with homelessness, there are substance abuse issues, criminal justice, and mental health. That doesn't mean because we're going to be recovery certified that this is going to be strictly basically of, for residents of substance abuse. It is not, because they, they handle all those three issues, mental health being a huge one. I don't know of a homeless person that wouldn't have mental health issues. So our primary target is homelessness, but the wide vast variety of issues that these women face, we have to be prepared to treat them. We also be working with Recovery Works and FSSA. That's where Safe Haven is funded. And so we'll meet those requirements. One of the other things that, so we'll be doing that in conjunction with, with Safe, Safe Haven to meet those NAR requirements. But also as a individual site, we're looking at reduce, reduction of poverty. And to do that, you have to build skills. The four pillars of poverty that we will be measuring, and we'll be successful on day one, is providing housing and food. So those will actually move up a step, health insurance, and then education or employment. So we'll be looking at these women individually, most certainly within the first week. We're going to be working on getting them an appointment with mental health and also to have a, a physical to see what issues need to, to be worked on. Again, Jen, Jenny mentioned no domestic violence. It's not a safe area for that. And we also have coverage in the community with Crisis Convention to do that. So those are some of the basic things we'll do. It's, a lot of our money is into these certifications and planning the time and travel that go with that. So the startup money that we're asking for you is hopefully to be a one-time thing so that we are, can set ourselves up and start taking participants in and servicing our, our community. And as Jenny mentions, we also have in mind, you know, two is a very small number, but that will give us the opportunity to fine tune this and to properly look at, excuse me, buildings and other areas that where we can grow. So our basic question here for you is how do we even access that line? What is the process? Is it a grant process? And then we all read up to any questions that you have.
No, yeah, at this time, I don't, I don't know of any committee that's been put together. I don't know that there's going to be a committee. I don't know if it just goes to the commissioners and then the council, or, you know, we haven't had anybody come up and make a request. So this is the first request that we've had. It's probably something I would prefer to put a committee together and include several different areas. You know, whether it's the circuit courts and the probation and the, you know, that side of things and many corrections maybe, and even the prosecutor's office. Whoever is deemed to be in that committee that is in that realm of dealing with situations like that, I think it would be important for them to be on a committee and then for them to hear those, you know, concerns and then make recommendations to us based on. I mean, that, that's just my opinion. I, I don't make those decisions. I just think that, that's kind of how we did with ARP funds. They formed a committee. And then people like yourself would go before the board and talk about these things and have these conversations. And then that committee would make recommendations to the commissioners and council, here's what we think needs funded, so.
So our next step would be to.
I think we need to establish a committee.
Yeah, we could, we could talk with the commissioners and see if we can establish a committee, put something together. Since this is our first real request.
Sure.
We can do that. And then if they, if, if everyone agrees on that, then it could, it could potentially work just like the ARP situation is how I would see that kind of model, but that's just my opinion, so. Yeah, I mean, is anybody else having any input on that? That's just what I'm thinking.
Many other questions too, I'm sorry.
I, I agree. I think that we need to have a committee formed.
It's our first real request, so, so. I think it's good, and I think it's good to have all those partners involved in all those different areas that are accepted, so.
I don't, I don't have any solutions for you back to any of you doing this. It's a nationwide, worldwide. It's a nationwide, worldwide.
It is. It really is. It's getting so bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something we need to hold on? That, that we would talk with the commissioners and see if we can form a committee of some sort?
Yeah, I think we need to.
If everybody's okay with that?
We need to start somehow.
Be an ocean right there.
Yeah.
I'd make a committee to.
It'll be an action to move forward.
See what we have, what we're going, what we're.
Should we attend the commissioners' meeting?
I'll second.
Second by.
I mean, you, you can always attend. Sorry, I can't attend any meeting that you want. So.
I can't hear.
All those favor of forming the committee, sit by saying hi. Hold name.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Was there any other public comments? Somebody else, somebody else signed up on that sheet that didn't? Okay.
Next item is approval minutes of June 27th and July 8th. Before, has everyone had a chance to read those?
Yep.
Motion by guilty approved.
I'll say. Take both at the same time?
Yeah, I think we were. Second by key, all those in favor, since I say an eye. Hold name, motion carries seven zero. Next we have Jane, Jane's recorder.
Yes, I'm not sure where to stand, but I'll just talk to you guys. But anyway, I'm here tonight to get, as counsel has requested, I need to come to you every year to get approval for my part-time clerks. And they, I have two part-time clerks. They work 42 hours per, per, per pay period or 21 hours a, a week. And you guys used to like to have a progress report. So I came with a progress report to show you how we're doing. Did everybody get my information on this? I sent out email to all the council on the, on this project. And if you didn't get it, I was, I will give you a copy to take home with you so you can read it. Did everybody get it?
I received it.
I thought it was very informative.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. So anyway, since I gave the progress report in July of 2023, the two part-time girls have indexed another 11,800 documents. And I also wanted to point out, since two years ago, they were added to, to have 42 hours per pay period instead of the, instead of 21 hours per pay period. What was that? 28 hours per pay period. But since we've increased it to the, to the.
Forty-two.
Forty-two hours per pay period. They back indexed 24,000 doc, 24,000 documents in the last two years. Before that, when we had one doing it for half a year, we back indexed like 5,000 documents. So it really helped getting our 42 hours per pay period. So I do want to thank you for that. And then I was going to tell you on our documents, we started in 2000. The girls are back to 19, in deeds, they're back to 1915. And in miscellaneous, they're back to 1932. So we've made a lot of progress. And the other part of the back indexing project is done by our full-time staff. And we do the auditing of everything they do. And we also have to check every book with the computer and get the book out and look through it and make sure every page is scanned, every document has been scanned because we can't miss a document. So it's just a really large project. It started out with 128,220 documents we've been working on. And we, like I said, we've made a lot of progress. And we just hope that we can continue with this project for our customers and for the citizens of Perry County.
So you have about five years left, right?
And we have about five to seven. We're going to give us a little room there because we're getting into the cursive handwriting and calligraphy. So it's a little bit harder to interpret. So I'm just, anybody have any questions for me or?
And that'll be the next, the last hundred year or?
Yes. We're hoping, we want to take it back to 1815 when our records began.
But the great thing about it, after you do this, anybody go online and go back to any year, anytime, wherever, pull it up.
That's correct. It's, it's on there. Everybody can.
That'd be good.
And you're keeping up with the new ones as they come in.
And we keep up our new documents as they come in. So. So I'm just asking for your approval then.
Motion by David Wheeler, our report then.
A second.
Motion by Keith.
It's two-part time.
Two-part times.
Motion by Keith, sigma, roll it to our two-part time.
And she uses that fund that she generates.
Yes, that comes out of the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. That doesn't come from the general fund. I pay it for my own Recorder's Perpetuation Fund.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Don't surprise me if I do, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor, since I say an eye. Hold name, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I get to be up here again.
I do appreciate all that information that you gave.
Thank you, thank you. So are you ready for me to go to this recorder's sworn statement? Okay. I've been doing this since about 2019. That's when a new law came in that if we had reserve funds, that we could spend our Recorder's Perpetuation money for general supplies and expenses. So we decided we wanted to help out and help with the general fund because we know things are tight. And so in order to, for me to pay my supplies and other expenses, this year I prepared a sworn statement for $5,025 that we will pay. It used to come out of the general fund. We're going to pay that with the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. And let me see, what else I want to show you guys? And I want to tell you, you know, what all we do use, I think I gave you a kind of a sheet on what we do spend our Recorder's Perpetuation money for. It's all the, the Recorder's Office computer hardware equipment, our large scanner, our maintenance agreements. We pay for our software, our computer software, our hardware, book restoration. We pay for everything, like I said, from paper clips to big equipment. So anyway, and the things that I have to swear to on this, on the sworn statement are that I have the current revenue to fund, to the record, and the Recorder's perpetuate, and the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund is sufficient to, to fulfill the statutory purpose for that fund. I have to swear that I have the technology of the county Recorder's Office, office that is updated and at a level to sufficiently meet the ma, meet the statutory purpose of the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. And then I have to swear that I have sufficient reserve consistent with Reporter's Plan for all the, for the newest technology and other record management upgrades necessary. So I have things I have to swear to. And Chris, do you have the copy of the ordinance? I do have one here for you to, for the council to sign.
I didn't bring, no, you emailed that to me, but I didn't bring that. No.
Do you need that?
No.
Okay, there you go. And here's the sworn statement too, man. It's not rice. So I'm just asking for your approval on my sworn statement.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Paul. All those in favor of approving Jane's sworn statements, since I say an eye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Mindy, Lasseline, and so after that, all about me.
That's okay. That's okay. I, I'm just here, I have, one of my employees has turned in a resignation. She is going to further her education. So I'm here just requesting to be able to post and fill that full-time position.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Zena, all of the favor, since I say, say aye.
Aye.
Hold name.
Name.
Six to one.
Thank you.
Next we have Mandy Jackson.
Mandy Jackson, Chair of the Plant Commission, while people call it billing and zoning. Part of our duties is to appoint, whatever I must refer to as Junie Bogus's open position as the administrator, something we have to look forward to doing. He, he actually resigned or retired in 2023. So here we are in the middle of 2024. We can probably figure out what we're doing there. As of right now, I think Randy or someone is taking care of those at this moment. So that's kind of been filtered that direction. Last year, I think there were approximately eight per month permits. They have to do permits. They also have to do any variances. We had two variances in the last 12 months. So you're looking at roughly eight per month permits. And then also any type of variances that we have, they have to take care of that. There's other duties that come along with that, obviously, but those are the bigger ones. It was discussed in our, I think it was April 29th, we had a meeting. That was the last meeting we had, some options that we can maybe do. There were some things of such of maybe appropriating into another office. The suggestions that were brought up were the Health Department. I actually presented that suggestion. There were other suggestions that maybe even try and put it in the city official office to just kind of join those. I think we nixed that one pretty quickly because the legal institute wasn't there. And then I think there was Assessor's Office. There were just a variety of suggestions. The general consensus was we voted to proceed forward like it was with Junie Bogus retiring and just replacing that position like it was for 2024. So that, that's the goal, I think, as far as what the board had voted on. Quickly, we found out that we needed approval to do that, which I speed my ignorance on that. I didn't realize some of that. It was posted, the position. We actually have received, I think, eight or nine resumes. I'll be honest, I looked through them. I think they were blanketed to apply for about every job that the county was posting. So I don't know that they understand what this job was even maybe going for, although that was also posted as well. So it is a part-time position. Junie Bogus, I think at the time, historically was doing roughly 15 hours per week. I think it was 1357 per hour was last I talked to Chris on what the hourly rate was. It's not a big monetary per hour. Obviously you can go to McDonald's and make 16 bucks an hour. So I don't know that the duties were a ton. I do think that there was mention of, we were missing some revenue from permits and such. I, I don't know how you would nail that down as to what that like, because who knows who's doing what. I think right now, the way it's looked at, you have to go to the Health Department first. Kim, Kim Roberson, I actually personally spoke to her about it. She was willing to entertain the idea of putting it in her office because right now you have to go to the Health Department. The, the process is you have to go to the Health Department, approve any type of sanitation, making sure that you're not even to expand your laterals or adding anything to the sanitation portion of it. Once you do that, which is here, right next door, you then have to go down to the courthouse to what was at the time Junie Bogus's office. Excuse my vagueness on it, if he was there or not there, did the permit, that sort of thing. So it wasn't really feasible for the community to readily have that available. It should be more of a Monday through Friday, nine to five, can at least call somebody or at least entertain it off the website. The website should have quick links. We're in a technology savvy world. You should be able to click it, download it, fill it out, send it in, that sort of thing, and make it a little more streamlined. So with her having to, Kim, that is, which is her position in itself, having to already fill out those processes, she actually has to go onsite to look at, at certain steps. They have to soil samples. There's 100 different things they have to do. But once they get to that point, she actually physically has to go to the property. It may, in my mind, when I presented it, more logical sense to go that route because she's already there. She's already looking at the property. I can streamline that in a little bit because I don't know, budget-wise, we just don't have the budget to entertain. I mean, 1357 an hour just isn't that much to entice someone to want to, for 15 hours a week, to do that. There, I had personally, I'm in real estate, I had several complaints. They, they looked to me to how to build and what they need to do. We sent them on the steps, could never reach, you know, it just kind of not related to business. We want them to pick Perry County, you know? So we want it to be easier for them to do that. And I looked to some other avenues, obviously. If you're going to grow, you're looking to the bigger places that are doing it better, right? So I looked to DuBois County, some of those areas to see how they were doing it. Their website is super streamlined, very easily, user-friendly, that sort of thing. So some of that would help too, if we could maybe get that link in there too. But so I'm just basically here is we have to get your approval because our duties is to appoint it. I don't know what the best solution is. I know we had kind of voted that it would be just to move forward like it was, but I don't know.
I like the idea of Kim Roberson taking on those duties and she's already doing the subject permits and she's available five days a week for the public and they wouldn't have to travel from here to there. They need both permits and then they wouldn't have to, you know, 15 hours a week is only, you know, if you're working five hours a day, it's three days a week, you know? You want somebody who's available five days a week for the public to be able to, you know, on, on their time, be able to come in and.
And I mean, I don't, I don't know the perfect solution. I just know it's not working the way it's going and it's not feasible for the community, which is who needs it.
Do you know if, if Kim would be able to do that?
I actually personally spoke to her on the phone.
Just change your job description.
Yeah, I structured her on the phone actually previously, prior to the last couple of meetings we've had as the board. I talked to her. She did express her only concern was she didn't want to have to clock out of one job to go to another job. I explained to her that we would then be looking at a different tier at that point that we'd have to get with the commissioners to approve, even adding that to her new job description, basically. So that's a whole nother level and it's just a big juggle there a little bit. But she was willing to entertain it. I, I don't know the pyramid scheme of how, who's responsible for who, but she herself as the Health Department was willing to do it. I think I learned that she does have an assistant now. So maybe that would even alleviate some of the concerns, look, maybe she wouldn't have time to do it. But I don't know. Again, I'm just one party in the Senate Board or however. And so that's kind of where I'm at with it. But I then learned that I had to get your assistance permission. So.
I kind of like that idea, especially since she has an assistant and everything. If we could just redo the job description, if she is willing to take on those duties to do that. I looked at some information today. I requested it from Commissioner Holt because he's the one's been doing it for free this year. And it's, he's had 48 permits and brought in $5,700. So if we continue this, we're not even going to bring in enough revenue to even pay the $15,000 a year.
Right.
You know, and, and again, that's only somebody maybe two, three days a week. And that's not really fair to the public. They need somebody that's going to be available five days a week for their benefit and their convenience. And that's how I feel about it. So.
And I do know that there was other, and I don't want to misrepresent my board because they did vote and that was my words to send it. There was some other options that were entertained, maybe do it like it is, put it in another office, that sort of thing. So understand that I'm not here to solutionize for one person or one. But that's just kind of where it was at with some of that. And that was the option. I do think it was also suggested to put like it is and maybe slide it into another office that's down there so that they, someone could answer the phone, maybe cross-train them and some of that stuff too. So I don't know what that realities looks like and all that. Look, I just hear.
It makes, to me, it makes sense to put it, you know, with Kim, you know, to incorporate that with, you know, in, in the office, you know?
She's already doing this.
And if you just add to her job description, then she wouldn't have to be switching from.
Right. It's not like you walk in and out. That was her main concern. I think part of your job, you're doing the subject endgoing permit. She had discussed that and that was her only concern. She said she was willing to take on the duties. Her only concern was just having to answer to where she was at at one time, which I can understand.
Some of her pain.
In that, I don't know, you know, financially what that looks like. Yeah. And I don't know, you know, as far as the board, I think our only goal is, you know, and there's a lot of arguments and we've seen a lot of stuff here tonight. Our goal is just maybe to streamline it for the community. And it's not working the way it's going. So we need to do something different that maybe makes sense. And I would love to give them more per hour, but we also understand we don't have any money. So that's just where that's at. So we're just trying to make it a little bit easier. And with her being willing to do that. I can re-speak to her because it's been a couple of months. But I think now that she's actually added someone else to her assistant there, that might even alleviate some of that too. Again, I'm not here to, but.
I think that's been so nice for the person who's building a home.
Yeah, to go one place.
Permit and just go.
It feels, it feels a little more natural flow to go one place. So that, you know, and she's already going to your property. She's already looking to make sure you're using it for the proper zonings. There are different zonings in our community and make sure that you're doing it for that way. If you don't, then you can apply for variance. We can go through that different. She would know some of that also. So I like that.
So do we need Mandy to talk to her or?
I mean, we need a motion.
What is the board thing?
That's what she's asking for.
To hire somebody?
To fill the position.
We do have to fill the position.
We're just talking about how, like.
I don't know that, I, I know that in our American.
That's the zoning board's position to figure out how.
To recommend to this board on if we're going to move forward with that.
That's what I don't know. I don't know terminology. And again, I'm not here to argue. I make it easier.
I just think it would be better on the public too, to have it in one spot. I mean, more convenient, five days a week, you know, they don't want to have to run all over the place if they don't have to. And then if they come here and then they go down there and they're not here and they have to go back there tomorrow because that person's only working 15 hours a week, I can see that's a headache and we don't want to make headaches.
The whole point of putting it in an office, I went to this meeting, the whole point of putting it in an office with more than one person is where you can cross-train, because that happened so many times just in the last year. When Junie was there, people would come and, you know, we would have to help them while he was out. Because most of the people you're catching that are coming in are the honorable people. There's so much more to this job, I believe, that is not being done. The people that are coming into the courthouse are the people that are coming to tell you. And then they come and they, no, they're, well, I tried, okay. So we need this position in an office that's not going to have a sign on the door half the time that they're out and about. So the whole recommendation when I went to this meeting was to put it in an office that's already staffed, where you can cross-train, where you have your main person that takes care of the planning and zoning. But if they're out and about doing inspections or whatever, that somebody's there enough to get the ball started as far as the paperwork. We've done that right now for Mr. Cole. We have the paperwork. We give them his email address. Tell him, fill out this paper, because this is the initial start of it. Get this to Mr. Cole, because he's overseeing these as of right now. So that was just our recommendation from the courthouse is to not put it in a one-man show office, that it needs to be where there's more people and there's not a sign on the door. I don't know Kim's situation as far as how often she's out, if she's out and the assistants here. I do know that she's basically at a 40-hour work week already. So you would, the other thing, like you said, is I don't think you can necessarily pay her as a planning and zoning separately or whatever. But you have to update the job descriptions, but I wouldn't want to run in, like I made at that meeting. You know, if Kim and her assistant are both out and that office is closed and somebody comes in, you're in the exact same situation you were with Judy. But if the assistant's always there or that office is open eight to four, Monday through Friday, then by all means, I think that's a great idea. But if there's going to be times on the, times that there is a sign on the door that says, "We're out", then that's not any different than what we have before.
Can we make a motion to bring Kim to the next meeting to talk to her about this? Or, I mean, so that, to see if, I mean, is that?
I mean, I, I know everybody's discussed, you know, it's been kind of in lingo for so long. I don't think that anyone's dropped the ball whatsoever. It's just what to do next, but.
Yeah, we just want to verify that, you know, would she still be interested? Maybe she's totally not, then we need to.
I don't know. I'm just one person. I would have to look at the dates, but last I spoke to her, she was, and again, she's added someone, which I think would alleviate what she was originally talking about, there's only one person there, not having someone. I do think it needs to be some way, and then also in addition, adding to our websites too, so kind of updating that.
Which is another thing, our entire update, our entire website needs updated.
Sure. So I, that's where I'm at with that. I don't know. Not sure what that looks like.
I'd like to.
Make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to talk to Kim Robertson and have her come to the meeting. I don't know if that's something we need Mandy to do or.
I don't know.
Or does she, can she come to this meeting? We can talk to her and ask her these questions, you know, like.
She'd come to regular meetings.
Yeah, she can come to our next.
I would think it would be something the Planning and Zoning Board ought to talk to her about. Everyone is going to hire, not down the council.
I mean, I did.
That's fine. If you want to call her to your next meeting and ask her, you know, I'd let your board ask those questions, and if that's feasible, then.
They'll bring it for us.
Yeah. So then my next step, if our board, just because I think it's a prolonged, but if our board decides that Kim is the, like, we're making sure with Kim to go ahead and put this position in there, then we can continue to move forward. I don't know. Does that need to be a motion or how does that work? I don't know.
Yeah, you still have, we'll still have.
Come back.
And we could have a special meeting if that's something you want to get going right away. It's just 48-hour notice.
Been six months.
Forty, it's not been, ball's not been drawn. I mean, I'm just saying, if you guys want to come faster than your next meeting
and then wait until our next meeting, you could always do a special meeting for that intended purpose, only with a 48-hour notice. So that's fine with me. I'll make a motion that Mandy, as President of the Planning and Zoning, take that recommendation for Kim Robertson, run her to your board and see if she'd be willing to do that and take on those duties and then see where that goes and bring it back to it. I made a motion, I guess, for that.
I'm second there.
Stan.
Second to Stan. All's in favor, somebody say aye. Hold name.
I appreciate it. It's been a fun couple hours of Oscar.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy.
Next, we have Steve Howell. Are we super candid?
Any of you still with us?
Still here. I had a fully retired, I'm.
I'll make the motion that our operator.
Motion by Keith, second by Dale, for Steve Howell, the opposition operator. All in favor, say a aye. Hold name. Motion carries, seven zero.
I have one other thing on our community crossings. Our bids come in less than what our estimate was. We were awarded a million and a half and we're going, out of the community crossings, we're only going to use a million, 101,150 dollars. So we've got 398 dollars, 398,850 dollars left that I have to buy for. And I want to buy for the second one, which is up here in this month.
I think it's wonderful. I'll make a motion to approve that. Give as much money as you can. We're going into the community. If we can get two million, let's do it.
Motion by Steve. Still looking at brush your bark first of August?
They pushed, they pushed back to the second week of August.
Motion by Kelly.
We've brought reasons for it.
Keith, all's in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Keep the bid low.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Next, we have additional appropriations. Riverwalk Commissioners, consulting services, $4,162.50.
It's $4,162.50, right?
Four thousand, okay, so they've sent another invoice in July for $75. So if you guys want to come, just, I mean, I can do another one, but here's the whole thing. What was advertised was in the paper and everything, was $8,287.50. And reason that was is because they're sending me multiple invoices and they're in different formats. So I thought it was separate, but it's kind of the same. So it should have only been $4,162.50.
But she's got another.
But if you got, I've got another invoice for $75.
Can you email it to us?
They did, yeah.
And then you can email.
Yeah, that's what I already emailed that.
So we can, we can.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So the appetite is high. Can we go ahead, since that air, if we can go ahead and do that, whatever, that 4,000? So I don't have to come do another $75.
But you still asked for one.
Yeah.
And that's the one.
Through July.
Yes, that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And I emailed that to you guys. You did this.
Yes.
I didn't get it.
This was said.
Motion by Stan to approve the.
Well, at least it's less.
4,162.50 plus 70. 237.50, 4,237.50. All those in favor, say a aye. Oh, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second to Kelly. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Hold name. Six and one extension. Next, we have local income tax detention center, maintenance contracts and maintenance supply, general maintenance supplies.
Is this, I do have a question. Did you email me that contract?
Nicole was out today.
I just don't remember it going through.
Which contract?
Is there a Johnson Controls contract that the mission?
I've had that for years.
That they signed off on?
Sheriff's Office. Before, the sheriff has always been in charge of the contract. Now the law changed beginning of the year and I have not signed another, a new one.
So you just have an existing ruling?
Yes. I need your question.
Yeah.
Okay. So which one are you going to go first? How about, I just do the maintenance contracts. The $3,000 is needed out of our contract simply because every five years you have to do this. If I don't pay it, it's a hefty fine if I don't get paid. So what they do, they send me the invoice first, later next year, or later this month, or the first of the year, first of the month, excuse me. They're going to do all the testing. This is something they do every five years. I did not put it in my budget. I will take the blame for that, but I'm just going to ask for 3,000 for that.
I guess I have.
So that wasn't, there's not money already appropriated?
Isn't that 350,000?
Not for that. It's not for the.
I mean, that was an out, but I don't know.
There's 350,000. Is it expended or?
But this is for the wet sprinkler system, testing and inspections of all wet sprinkler system.
It's mandated every time.
Yeah, but I mean, you have a budget for 350,000. I mean, you used all that and you're asking for.
On my contracts, yeah. It's all, it's all, it's not being all done, but it's said for, it's called for, spoken for, spoken for, thank you.
The jail operation.
I don't think it's been spent. It's not been spent, but he's saying it's spoken for.
Yes, it's allocated.
It's allocated.
I know, but I don't know that we can do an additional appropriation if that's not even all gone. Like, doesn't that have to be gone and then, then we do additional?
But how do you do that in a budget? How do you do that in a budget? I have a budget for that. I did not add that.
Whatever you, whatever you have left at the end, it's not, you come back for additional there. You pay these out of that.
Whatever you all say.
I see what you're saying.
I think that's appropriate.
They're saying, wait till you run short.
Yeah.
When you run, when you run short.
So you mean I got to come back?
Yeah, when you run, you know, because when you run out, because you have money there now, you just go ahead and pay these.
But is there any reason why? Because I'm going to have to come back. Why can't I do it now? It's a three, it's a $3,000 bill.
I'm not sure that you can do additional appropriations when you already have money sitting there to pay these things.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that, but I'm. I would just go uncomfortable.
I'm just trying to get it. I'm uncomfortable if we don't pay it. I'll be uncomfortable if they, I get a bill where they, they, they charge me every day that I don't pay it.
Yeah, no, I think you should go ahead and pay it. You have $350,000 there. Go ahead and pay.
I was just asking to get ahead of it. That's fine. I'll come back later. Another thing is janitary and maintenance supplies. As you guys can tell, my, my, my numbers are way up.
Inmate population.
Inmate population. The numbers are up and they are not going down. This is the new norm. I've said this for, I don't know, how many, how many months now? So I asked for $10,000 for additional funds requested to cover the janitorial needs for the detention center. This includes trash bags, toilet paper, maintenance supplies, and detention center for the kitchen and also for the water supply.
I think this is also something that might be able to be paid out of that. Let me look. I have that in.
That was out of the.
Out of the one that you still have money in. I think you can, it's out of the same one, right?
There's no appropriation left in that one though.
No.
There's no appropriation. On the same line.
It's different.
There's no appropriation.
There's no appropriation left in that one.
Make a motion, we allow it.
Yeah.
Well, these are.
Not, yeah, they are. Aren't they?
Mine are.
Oh, they are?
Oh, this one is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little different, not much.
I see. There's a two. I got two. Yeah.
There's a two there. Because like I said, our number's not going down. You can see it every day. And.
One in the inmate population right now.
Like this morning, it was eight, four. I didn't look at my thing today.
David, I made a motion to allow it.
I motioned to.
Yeah.
So the fund number's the same, but the account one is.
Well, it is just, it's just one difference, so.
Two, one, or three, one, two, one, zero, or, or yeah.
Different general ledger numbers. Okay, motion by Paul to approve, second by Keith. All's in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Hold name. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next, we have a transfer, Corks Recreation. This is just from Facility Maintenance Assistant to Equipment Repair, $2,000. I assume he was without a employee for a while, and he had some money there.
So rather than ask for an additional appropriation, it's just making money, right?
Yeah, he has, what was it, Ford Repair.
Is this your white truck?
No, it's a black.
It's the one you drive?
Yes.
Oh, I know your ear.
Yeah.
It's the older truck.
The one you drive is older than the white one?
Yeah, not that much.
Okay.
A year or five.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Motion by Stan to approve, second by Paul. All's in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Hold name. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for standing.
Next, we have the 2025 pay holiday calendar approval.
Okay, where's Steve?
Steve Howell?
Where did he leave?
He left. He left.
I wanted to ask him about this weird holiday.
I had already spoken to him. He said, literally, he said, that's the way it's always been.
Well, that's that combination.
And.
No, not really, because they work different, 10-hour days versus seven-hour days.
Yeah, they work, yeah. He said that's the way it's always been. I think it's because they work four tens.
Four tens, yes.
Can we just verify with Wagner Shelly that that's, we're not doing something that's going to come back on us in like 10 years of, oh, you should have been giving them this? I mean, I don't know. I just want to make sure that if they're owed it, I want them to have it.
Yeah, because I even asked him, because I thought, well, maybe they get like a floating holiday or something. And Kelly was like, no, he said no. He goes, that's just the way it's always been. He said, but if you'll give it to us.
Well, do you imagine that 10 hours versus seven hours is the reason that they get one paid holiday less?
So that, I guess we could check with Wagner Shelly, but.
Yeah, I can evaluate.
I just think if we, if we can just make sure we have it on record that we've verified that they're not owed that. Because if they are owed it, I want to make sure they get it.
And this isn't that, that, I mean, we can, this can hold off to August. David, did you want to bring up the election date too, that's been added on there?
The what?
The election date that's been added on there.
November 5th.
Okay.
Can you read it?
I told you for the questionnaire from Hamilton Schools.
Is that for next year?
So next year, and we can, since we're not going to do anything, we can talk about it next month or next month.
And I was questioning whether he did in a non-election year. You said he probably could.
He said his attorneys told him he could. Rachel's not here. What is it? So, next year is a non-election year, so we wouldn't have any of those holidays.
Yeah.
Hamilton Schools, Alsebit is wanting to do a questionnaire next November. And it has to be, it can't be done this November. It has to be, you know about this?
It has to be every eight years.
Yes, and it has to be next November.
And it has to be.
Is it on that school tax rate deal?
Yeah, it has to be next November.
Normally, when there's not an election year, they have a floating holiday, correct? Or they just don't get a holiday?
We don't get it. Then you adopt the calendar and it's just not on there.
You see, like the city, you have a floating holiday, you still get a holiday.
No, we adopt the calendar and it either has it on there or it doesn't, so we adopt it.
What did we do the last time, even?
What do you mean?
Do you have records of what was, they had this before. Hamilton did this before.
But we had an election. We don't have, the deal is, the county has no extents for an election next year. So it's gonna, but I think that Rachel said that the city will have to, or the school will have to pay for it?
Yes.
The county probably has to pay.
Pay for it upfront and then they reimburse, yeah.
And then they reimburse.
Okay, so it won't be an additional cost for the county then?
There'll be a reimbursement initially. It'll be reimbursable.
And then you'll get reimbursed.
Yeah, so we had to add that on there, which just had, we just found out this week. So that's an additional change from last.
He's prepared to, or I guess they had to.
Have they filed the paperwork?
Rachel brought me all the paperwork and everything. So, yeah, so there's no.
Like a referendum for the adding of taxes?
It's a questionnaire. He said it's a questionnaire.
If they raise the tax.
Yeah.
I mean, it's part of the school.
It's an additional.
And, yeah, they have it. They proposed it the first time, I can't remember, when we first got our machines. And we had, they had to have a special election. And I think, and then it's every eight years. Well, it falls on, not all year. And we questioned it, why we couldn't do it this year, because they had it till August 1st. Their attorney says, no, they have to do it eight years. They can't do it.
Seven years.
Seven years. They have to do it then eight.
I'll make a motion, we table the federal holiday schedule, I guess, then maybe.
Yeah, so we'll just table that.
See what happens. See what happens.
Table.
Well, I'm going to have, the thing is, I mean, I'm going to have to, the holiday schedule affects budgets because we have to budget for it. So we originally, with departments, and I don't, I don't think it will only affect, we have to, have to work with the sheriff's office because their budget will change a little bit on holiday pay with thirteen instead of twelve.
So you, we're going to have the extra holiday.
Yeah.
So the only question I mean is.
If I'm on Steve's. I think just to be safe, we better.
I, I, I agree.
Because you don't want to come back in your, oh, we thought it was right.
Okay, motion by Keith to table the holiday pay until we get clarification.
Second.
Second by Paul.
I'll email them tomorrow.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Um, ARP.
ARP funding approval.
Question on one of those. I recognize all of, what's that clarity audio hearing equipment? What is that?
Something for your ears.
I know, but is it a business starting up or what?
Kevin Wanniers, dark, is open that up.
That new, that's a brand new.
It's that new building next to Kevin's office.
Does ARP even qualify for that? I thought ARP was for like distressed businesses or people that.
No, this round was for healthcare. It wasn't.
For healthcare?
Like, we funded, we also, I think like the last time, they also funded the new Envision Eye Care for a piece of equipment that they had.
Okay.
So, do we need to read these?
We have on here, Coroner, twenty-five thousand.
For cooler.
For cooler. Perry County Council on A D, Dan Rep, five thousand, not cheap either. I don't know, it's expensive. Girl softball, born, thirty-five thousand. Legion Field Resurfaced Track, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Clarity audiology, hearing equipment, forty-four thousand. Perry Central Pickleball Court, forty-four thousand. Rome Courthouse repairs, one hundred thousand. Did you see this?
Now, that's, that's a dollar for dollar match, up to a hundred thousand. So they have totally until December first, I think is what was decided to come up with their match up to a hundred thousand. So they may have a little less, but we get until December first so that if they don't come up with the full amount, we still have a month to go ahead and do something with the remainder of the funds, so we don't lose them.
Hope they come up with it.
I hope they come up with it.
Derby Walk Path, for seventy thousand, which is a total of three hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred. Motion to approve. Motion by Keith.
Second.
Second by Paul for ARP funding. Do that amount, say if I say aye.
Aye.
Hold name.
And Chris is right, we will have to get on some of these contracts, because they're going to have contracts with certain stipulations. If they don't do bidding process correctly, they're going to have to pay things back. All of them will have to sign.
ARP might have to get a contract by the end of the year, encumbered, whatever.
Has to be, we have to allocate it some, yeah, and then the final checks have to be written by two thousand twenty-six. By just basically all the ones that we have extended and full, we need to get a written contract.
Next meeting is Thursday, August the twenty-second, five P M. at the courthouse.
Unless it's just something they're waiting on buying or something. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Paul, second by Kelly to adjourn, say if I say aye.
Aye.
Hold name. Motion carries seven zero.